Senate and the governorship. And the governor doesn't seem to really agree with anybody on what they think should be happening. And the Democratic Party seems to be split and the Republicans are hamstrung just by sheer number. So it's a really interesting kind of year this year, and we're kind of really just bouncing through as we can. The number of bills is extremely reduced. You know, we're seeing probably a tenth of the bills really heard that we normally would hear. And you know, they're not really hearing many controversial ones in terms of, you know, one of the ones they did hear was that five one one four that would have reopened Washington. And that was pretty early on. I think they learned their lesson on that. In terms of there was thousands of people signed in and supportive of it, and they didn't really want to pass it. So they stopped hearing things that they didn't really want to pass. You know, so it kind of puts us on the defensive a lot here. You know, with that, the budget is definitely going to be a fight all the way down to the very end. You know, the House and Senate transportation budget, you know, sometimes they they get together and then they don't always match up. And so we're trying to make sure there are some different aspects to that budget that are beneficial to us out in the rural areas. Some different ways to raise some money and be able to fund our projects, but in general, it's status quo. Couple of the things in terms of what we're seeing in the legislation right now, there's very little that's coming directly. You know, pointing at direct issues that that affect us or don't. What we're seeing is little things that get caught in the back of bills. And something that's going to be, you know, what we see a lot of this year, a great example is something that would be fantastic for a urban center. But then you start thinking about it in terms of rural issues. One example would be Rattelli's bill, the one 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 zero, and that's talking about the compilation of your your health board. And we've talked about that one previously, you know, that's very difficult in the rural areas. You know, you also look at some of the public stuff in terms of criminal justice. And the criminal justice reform specifically, they're looking at, they're still entertaining here like with fifty fifty one. And that's talking about community oversight for your peace officers. And there's a couple of bills talking about actually removing tools that your officers have. Now, in a city like, you know, Tacoma, Seattle, Bellingham, Spokane even, not such a huge deal. Because your backup's right around the corner, you know, you get out into the rural areas and one of your deputies, if they get in trouble, you know, there's not help for thirty minutes, maybe more, you know, your help is going to come from the neighbor that sees what's going on if there is a neighbor, you know? And so removing tools that your officers have, dogs, different, you know, firearms, different things like that. And one of the the biggest calls, unless things have changed, one of the biggest responses that we have in the rural areas is domestic violence. And they're also one of the most dangerous. And so, you know, just things like that, I mean, we don't want to put our officers into positions where they're going to be at risk of injury, more so than they normally would in the normal course of duty. So there's a lot of those issues coming out right now. You know, like I said, things that work really well on the urban centers that just don't make sense for us. One of those that they're pushing right now, and this will be a big budget issue in terms of how well the governor wants to play with everybody. If he gets some of his carbon initiative stuff, if he gets something on the carbon initiative, then, you know, he'll probably play a little bit better on on the other aspects of the budget. But right now, Washington is sitting at number four in the nation, fourth highest for the gas tax. If the carbon stuff goes through and we add that eighteen point five cents or whatever it'll come out to be, we would definitely be back at number one, leading the nation in high gas tax. Really a regressive tax on that again, in the rural centers where you drive, you know, ten miles a week to get to work and home. It, you know, it's not that big of an impact, but somebody in your county who drives thirty minutes, an hour to get to work both ways. You know, it's really disproportionate. And so I think that we'll probably see some, you know, obviously some pushback on that. And some stuff like that will really make the legislators step back and go, yeah, I don't know if we should do this. The fiscal notes on a lot of these bills are going to kill them because the state's really short on money. A lot of the windfalls that they predicted last year and the money they spent just isn't there. And so there's a couple of other bills that are impacting, you know, the rural areas here. A lot of them around property taxes and some of these are relatively new. Representative Volz out of Spokane put his removal of the penalties for late late payment on your property tax. That's fourteen ten. He's got that out there. Again, it's the same bill that we've heard almost every year. It really, what we found is over the last year, if people aren't compelled to pay their property taxes, they don't pay their property taxes and then you guys are short. Another one that really lines up with that, that seems to continue to move here is thirteen thirty two. And thirteen thirty two talks about deferring property taxes to October. Now, there is an application process and you guys do have to approve that. But the question there arises is, you know, most of your bonds come due in June, July. And so if you don't raise your money till October and you have to pay money in June and July, you know, the state was was very generous and set up a loan account for you that you'd be paying interest on, which I'm sure is something that you don't really want to do anyway. So there's, you know, there's there's those questions like that, you know, I mean, it sounds good. But in practice, it really becomes pretty onerous for us and throws a whole nother wrench into, you know, just into your operations there that you're trying to, trying to manage your budget on the county level. So the other one that people have been asking about a lot is the fifty seventy eight. And that's the high capacity magazines bill. It's sitting in rules, it's made it quite a ways through farther than I really thought it would. But there's a federal precedent sitting down in California that I I think makes this bill unconstitutional. You know, there is some question about that, you know, in terms of the terms, this bill basically says that you can have them. You can't trade them, you can't sell them, you can't manufacture more, you can't go out with them, but you can have it. So I think that's maybe where they're trying to get around that unconstitutionality and and that particular case. So we'll have to see what happens with that one. And, you know, it's it's a little discouraging that it's moved as far as it has. The other concerns that we've got, and I know that we're talking about this in the Legislative Steering Committee as well, is a lot of these bills that are offering counties additional fiscal flexibility. The the question arises, as you look at these and you guys consider these and and what you want to do with them. From the the legislature, how this is viewed is if you take advantage of these fiscal flexibility or some of these fiscal flexibility options, you kind of have to step back from your unfunded mandate conversation. Because then they're saying, well, we've given you the fiscal flexibility to implement the policies. If you take advantage of those, good for you, now we're going to consider it funded. And so you're kind of cutting the legs out from underneath you on your argument on unfunded mandates. While we need the fiscal flexibility in many cases, that does provide the other side some ammunition and saying, well, you know, you kind of abandoned your position. So it's just something to think about on the local level as you consider any of the fiscal flexibility options. You know, again, it's kind of like the GMA when it first came in, it looked really appealing, you got a bunch of money. And thirty years later, you're sitting here going, wow, what did we do? So, you know, Keep your money, yeah, and and that's that's some of what we're looking at with this. And that's some of the considerations that I think you should make on the local level, whether these bills pass or not. The the concerns are being raised to the legislators so they know. But, you know, while that is appealing, it's something to consider. So with that, do you guys have any questions for me, anything you've seen, any bills that are questionable or concerning or whatever?
Okay, that's numbers, if not first. I had a couple and I left my notes from LSC home on my desk. So I don't fill numbers, but I had signed in on a couple of them in favor of. One is the extension of the point oh nine.
Oh, yes.
Kind of that, and I don't, I don't know, I didn't get a report. I know that was Jefferson County, Kate Dean was, Commissioner Dean was kind of leading the charge on that. Two, and I don't know, I know it had a committee hearing that was, I guess, a week, maybe over a week ago. Last, a week ago Monday, I think, there was one on that, and I did not, I had not heard. I will say, and I haven't really expressed this to Melanie at WAC, our new, I kept missing the old format of the, our our bill reports now. Four thousand pages or on the screen. It's great, we have all this information, but it's almost too much, you can't, and there's there's no rhyme or reason to how they're put together either. So they're not in chronological order. So anyway, that's a, that's a discussion for me and what's that about you.
Well, part part of what we see with that one is, you know, you've got a whole bunch of different people putting together information for the similar packet, and you're right, there's no format. It's just, when it comes.
Right, and that's why you noticed, I mean, because I know you're meetings and it's like, what page are you on? And you know what it's, I'm on page sixty nine of a hundred and forty two, you know, you got a problem. You know, it's like, we needed a little, a little more. So I don't know that one, I I don't have the number off the top because I don't, and I'm not going to find it in this pile. If anything's going to happen. And then there also was one was a, it was a new, I'm not sure who proposed it. It was to, it was similar to the oh nine where it was, but it was for broadband. It was to add, I think it was point oh four, you use as a, as a credit towards from the state's portion of the tax. Sales tax that could be used for broadband. And I, again, I don't see that going anywhere because of the fiscal note, you know, the state's not going to want to share any of theirs. So I'm assuming it's it's dead on arrival. I did, I did sign in and support of that, they had, the hearing was again, it was last Monday.
And that bill, I I think they're going to execute, it's sitting, I think they did execute, it's sitting in the fiscal committee. And you're right, I think it's going to die for lack of funding. And the point oh nine money, you know, that we'll, we'll, we are watching that one. You know, I don't know what's going to happen with it. I think there's going to be the, obviously, the fiscal considerations there. And we'll, we'll see what, and if I.
I hope with, this is, you know, this is the thirty year program that this is, or twenty five anyway. And so it's not like the state's losing money, it's just, it's just an extension to allow us to keep doing it. And it's really useful, but I mean, we have, we were one of the earlier opters of that. And so we are kind of coming, I don't know if we're in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four, or it just goes away without an extension and maybe the state, now again, it's they use their money and want it back even after twenty five years and all the great investments we've made with it. But they're very jealous about their money.
Well, and and so I think one of the components of that bill, or maybe it was a different one on the point oh nine. Gave you a little bit of flexibility in the short term to reappropriate some of that money as you needed for different operations within the county. But I might have a different bill, or maybe that was.
Flexibility, I think the other one, excuse me, was just a clean, just extending the sunset out to like, I don't know, thirty or twenty forty or something. Because some of the are coming up on their sunset. And, you know, we we use that for all kinds of economic development for infrastructure project. We we approved one just, you know, last week or a couple of weeks ago for one of our ports, which that's another discussion that the, but that's with us and that's the state auditors, so. Okay, and I would agree, as far as this, this year, it feels really hard to be engaged with the legislature in any meaningful way, you know? Short of a test with, you know, our local, you know, with our local representatives, that's really about the only way I'm having any input into what's going on as far as it's, you know, it's, it's just so different than how normally would be up in Olympia. You could go meet with members, talk to them, kind of get a sense of where they're at on that, you know, and not even your members, but other members would be willing. And so I, I'm actually kind of supportive if they don't do a lot of big, big stuff this year because I really don't think, I just really don't think there is meaningful engagement. If you're, if you're talking about huge policy changes, this, you know, there's there's some that they, this is the year to do it because they don't really have to have that engagement, but I I think it's a bad idea.
Well, and Representative Dent was actually pushing just to get what they needed to get done, you know, right now. And then push the session out to late April and come back so that, you know, you could open the doors and windows and people could get in and we could see people. That's not happening, obviously, Speaker Jenkins wants to be out on time and really isn't compromising on that. So I, not that I'm complaining by any means, but they've got a lot of work to do. They've got a lot of work to do to get, she's got a lot of work to do to get her own party on board right now so that they can pass anything. So it's, it's a mess up there, it really is, you know? And for us, when we couldn't find somebody or they wouldn't talk to us before, we could partake in our lurking activities and hide in a corner. Ambush, they came out of the committee, you know, now they don't want to talk to us, they just don't answer the phone. So it's definitely been difficult in that respect. So, you know, we all have different relationships with different legislators, you know, and so we're having to work together as lobbyists more to get access to who we need. And it's, it's definitely cumbersome. So, and the legislators are cranky, they've been on the phone like this all day for fifteen minute blocks since six in the morning. So, you know how it goes. But that's where we are right now, we're coming up on cutoff here in a little more than a week. So next Wednesday is the first cutoff for bills out of their first policy committee. We will have a much, much more clear view after that. Of course, you know, they can pull anything, they just necessary to implement the budget, put that little tag on it and they can pull anything after that. But we'll get a much more clear view probably next Wednesday, Thursday, of what we're really going to be dealing with in the second half of session here. And hopefully, you know, at this point, no news is good news. So the less they deal with, the better off we're going to be.
Okay, any other comments or questions from?
Can you talk about bill ten seventy six, the one that authorizes workers and organizations to prosecute their employers for pay and safety violations? And it deputizes private lawyers to act as state attorneys. I heard that made it out of committee, are you thinking that's going to go all the way through?
So that one right now is, it did make it out of committee. And so what we're looking at with that one, there's not a fiscal note attached to it. This is again, another one of those accountability bills. I don't know, thi- this is a big hot button topic, obviously. Since it made it out of committee, we don't have to worry about the fiscal or the the cutoff, and it's not going to go to a fiscal committee. I don't know, this one, just looking at the number of sponsors and who's signed on to it, I'm going to tell you, it probably has some legs. So, and it it came out a committee on a party line vote.
All right, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I guess if not, we can, we can let on to your next appointment, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, sir, well, thank you very much, I appreciate you guys' time. And please let me know if you need anything between now and our next talk, call, email, text, anytime, I'll be available and we'll get you going. Great, thank you, and good luck with the rest of it.
Jake, was Dave cutting in and out or getting kind of weird dog talky there?
Yeah, I was hearing it, what Dave might want to do is call in on his phone, if he can call in. And and then turn off the computer audio, because that'll be difficult to get through all day like that.
Right, that's why I was bringing it up. In other words, your video is kind of glitchy, like you don't have very good internet on your.
What if I should go on the wifi instead of the, let me try that.
Yeah, if you go on the county wifi instead of your, your own phone thing that's attached to the iPod, that might work.
Okay.
Because as we're watching the video, you're jumpy back and forthy. Dave Sodder's network bandwidth is low, is what my screen says.
Don't talk about his mental capacity like that.
Just trying to help a brother out. I did hear that people are signing up for the SpaceLink stuff now without beta testing. So I just heard that earlier, so I got to check into that one.
I have not heard that Star, Starlink has gone non-beta, that's interesting.
That's what our guy out here was saying, so. That he got it and he's non-beta, and other people have have signed on, but they're not going to receive it until the end of the year. Your video is much better, Dave, so your audio is probably going to follow.
Okay, good, I'll, I'll try it that way for a while because my, my cell is not that great in here either. I can't imagine that it's any better, so.
Dan, it's saying that Starlink is available to a limited number of users per coverage area at this time. Orders will be fulfilled on a first come, first served basis, interesting.
I know what they were saying, so if you guys got it, and then other people that jumped on when they told them said probably by summer or fall of twenty twenty one, well, the next people that just signed on, I get it, and that's not a beta type of a thing, so. I missed the boat on that one, obviously.
Did you fill out with this new one now?
No, I haven't yet because I just heard about it this morning. So I'm signed on with the beta, but obviously didn't get that. So I'll go on to that one later and sign on to it just so I can be at least on the front part of the list. The public of it, there'll probably be three thousand people ahead of me.
Has any of your neighbors got it though out there? You might not have a cell that currently covers you.
I haven't heard of any, but, you know, we're all a mile apart, so they don't like us out there. Either the Century Link or anybody else.
Yeah.
I'll be curious to see how this works with the Public Works zooming in too. Personally, I think they have a pretty nice setup over at Public Works, I guess we'll find out.
It'll be interesting, not talking over each other is the hard part.
But we just have to be polite, let there be, I guess, there could be some polite pauses so that you could make sure, like.
More and more looking at our screen and seeing whose hands up, it's going to be a weird protocol to get this figured out. But more pauses probably is correct.
Well, I hope you're not correct, although I suspect you are, but this may continue for a while, so.
I hope I'm wrong too, but.
Yeah, I don't think you are.
It seemed pretty crystal clear when I read it, there wasn't a lot of workarounds. I will say not wearing a mask is kind of fun.
Yeah, that's nice. I mean, that's always been one of the benefits of, you know, when we're at home, where I have Zoom meetings at home for different committees and stuff. It's that, yeah, you get to not have a mask.
Read people's facial expressions?
Yeah.
I miss that.
Yeah. I guess I'll, these, I'll, when I'm done with them, I'll slide them under your tour.
Jake, are you planning on doing these from home as long as we're in this scenario?
I might come up on Thursday, I'm not sure yet.
New email from Public Works, guys.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing.
I was really mentioning it for Dave, not for you, I figured you were on the ball there, Jake.
I saw it, it came up, although I'm busy. Sorry, I haven't got the stone tablet under my door yet, so. Let's see.
Well, we got about ten seconds, Gordy's probably running somewhere to get in front of a video screen. He likes running, so.
I'm here.
Good morning, Gordy.
Good morning. This is going to be different.
This is going to be different, so. Here, I was thinking you had really state of the art, high tech video conferencing capacity there in the Public Works building.
Yeah, that's the new building, has all that stuff.
Well, hopefully by the time we move in there, this capacity, so. I can't, I don't know that I could live with the idea that come October, November, we're still.
Oh, wow, well, thank you.
Yeah, that is a sad thought.
Yeah. Whatever you're ready, Gordy.
Okay.
We did get your department update emailed over, so we've got that.
Good, okay. All right, on the consent agenda, we have a couple of items. First one is notice the vendors to advertise for purchasing our liquid asphalt for this summer's chip ceiling program with our maintenance crews. And that will be on ad until March ninth is the bid opening. And so I think the next challenge for us is bid openings in this new environment. But we'll, we'll work through those details. The next item on your agenda is notice the contractor scheduling a bid opening for the Old Mountain Road project. And that will also be on March ninth. And so we're moving forward with that project, we have a couple of payment approvals. And so we're moving forward with that project. We have a couple payment approvals. The first is pay estimate number one, and the final, this was the temporary jail intercom system that died, and we had a temporary fix for that until we could get the new control board up and running, which is hopefully just about a week away. So pay estimate number three to Justice Systems, and that's for the next one for the control board upgrade, and that's the company that's working on that project. And then we talked about this last week in person, contract change order number 65, and that's for the controls for the card readers that were left out of the new building in our plans, and that's for $61,558.97, and that includes all of the card readers that were left out and the equipment for that, so this completes that piece of the project. Nothing really new on the construction program, just kind of moving the striping contract forward to get a signed contract and bond. Courtney Road, we made progress on one of the right-of-way negotiations, and that should move forward. We still have the two outstanding out of the area property owners that we're working with, and I think we're pretty close on those. And then the good news is we did get draft easement from the Forest Service that we'll be bringing to you guys to sign after the prosecutor has a chance to look at it, hopefully next week or the week after, so that one's moving ahead, and it has a path toward completion, which is great. We talked about Old Mountain Road going out to bid this week. SDP paving project, after we get plans submitted to Washdott, then they can approve our construction funding, then that one can get advertised for this summer. That's the paving of Roosevelt Grade Road and West Darland. And then our grant-funded projects, we are just kind of in the holding pattern. I think we have probably about two weeks is our guesstimate for when Washdott's gonna approve our construction funding, and we can advertise those projects, and that's for the countywide edge lines, guidepost, and sign upgrades. So those projects will be the first ones after Old Mountain to get out the door for construction this year. On the maintenance side, Goldendale and Bickleton, they're doing a lot of brushing. They didn't have the challenges the West End did for the wind that we received this past weekend. So, and then we're, it looks like we're gonna get some snow toward the end of the week and through the weekend and next week, so they'll be working, I'm sure. Through that, I think on the west side, they, in our higher elevations, predicting between 12 and 20 inches of snow they'll see over there, so it's probably the most significant we've seen all year for snow accumulation. So Bickleton's pretty much just mowing. They do have an improvement at the intersection of Gander Road and Bickleton Highway that some of the large trucks, farm trucks and trailers are struggling to make that turn, and so we're making some improvements there. On the west end, like I said, the crew was pretty much out all weekend, and I think I sent you an update on what was going on with the crew over there, but pretty much reacting to weather activities mostly for them this week, whether it's cleaning up trees and debris from the windstorm or reacting to the snow. And the good news, I guess with the colder temperatures, the roads that were closed last week due to freeze thaw conditions are now all open, and and one of those, one of the logging companies actually ended up hauling rock to to help bridge over some of the soft spots, so that helped as well. So everybody's hauling again, so that's good news. On the facility, I think the roofers are here this week. I don't know how much they'll get done before we get any kind of weather. Like I said, last week they were out, cuz of COVID their crew was, which was really a great week, and they needed about four good days. I don't think they're gonna get it this week. So that may slow down until we get better weather. So we have snow predicted and then some rain, which could cause some localized flooding. We'll have to wait and see. Uh, let's see. Courthouse entry is still on ad. Nothing really new on the control board. They're working through that, and I don't think we've had any issues. Things are coming together well. And then Jeff Hunter is working on the Sadus Pass and the Click-It-Tat upgrade site, and the fire hall, our carpenter continues to work down there this week to button that project up so we can put equipment in that space. One of the things I wanted to bring up for you guys is they have the County Road Administration Board, or we mostly refer to them as CRAB. They have a new training, a training for new commissioners coming in March, and I don't know if they sent you all the notification, but I can send a link if anyone's interested in that training to kind of help understand what CRAB does and the rules and and things that we have to abide by to make sure we continue to obtain and receive all of the the funding that we do through, that comes through them, as well as our standards, a good practice for how we do business as a road department. You've probably also heard about the tax increases that the legislature's proposing at the senate level. So the Washington State Association of County Engineers are trying to wrestle with all those proposals, but it's it's a massive tax increase. And as usual, there's just very little for counties and cities as well out of that. So they have two proposals, and they're both pretty high. One's an $18.2 billion revenue increase, and the other one, which includes a carbon fee proposal, is $19.1 million. I think I've heard the gas tax they wanna raise is 18 cents a gallon, and the carbon's up to, I think, 40 cents. So it's significant. And I think the county engineers around the state are trying to figure out how to respond to this. I think the legislative proposal, and I'll send some information over on these. Our big funding revenues are the gas tax, obviously, our distribution there. And then we get money for preservation of our paved road surfaces through a program that comes through the CRAB board, and that's called CAP, and they're gonna ask for, I think, 100 million more for that. Preservation is really important in our, you know, the gas tax dollars have not increased significantly or the property tax, so while we have increased maintenance since I've been here over the last more than a decade by about $1 million, $900,000, just our buying power has shrunk quite a bit due to inflation as well and other cost increases. So that's helpful. If we get an increase there, that'll boost that maintenance program up. And then they're also asking for an increase in the rural arterial program, which is called RAP, and that's how we fund our bigger projects, our reconstruction projects like the Courtney Road project and the Sundale Road project, which is up on our list in the future. And most of our big reconstructions are funded that way, and that's a grant program through the CRAB board. So. So we meet on the 11th as the county engineers, and they wanna talk about our thoughts on these legislative proposals to increase taxing. And I don't know what kind of influence we'll have over that, but as far as how it's distributed, ultimately, we may have a say in. So if you have some thoughts you want me to pass along, I can.
Any thoughts, Mr. Christopher?
Gordy is Dan. I have a question about your gas tax percentage. So is that a set percentage based on what the gas tax is now? Say if it's, if we're paying $2.50 a gallon now, and you're getting whatever the number is, half a percent. If it goes to $3 a gallon, are you still getting half a percent of $3 a gallon, or how does that work?
Yeah, so there's, it's a, it's a, well, they talk about a percent, well, we got a percent of the increase, which is if it was 5% of, I don't know, so just, I think the last one was like, it ended up being like half a cent distributed between the 39 counties. So we don't get more, we just get that percentage of a penny or a percentage of the total distribution or increase to the tax. So, cuz the reason why the gas may go up is not because of the tax unless it's the legislator, legislature adds that to it.
Okay, so my thinking is that if the gas tax goes up, but people actually drive less because fuel costs more, we might actually receive less revenue than we do now. Is that possible, or am I thinking backwards?
Yes, that would be a case where we would receive less, correct.
All right, thank you.
And I believe the reality is that it has actually already happened as far as, we might not maybe in total revenue, but, you know, gas tax is a, as a, you know, share of revenue has been going down for years because as vehicles get more efficient, you know, gas is more expensive, people use less, there's less, there's just less tax revenue. And I'm not sure, Gordy, either of these, you know, and we're wrangling with the same thing as far as at the WASC LSC meeting, trying to, you know, thread the needle in that, I don't think across the board, there's very few people that are really in favor of a big, massive tax increase. But we liked the discussion about, you know, the understanding that there are unmet needs in the in the county road programs, and there's some dollars, even though neither of these proposals really does a good job of sharing, but at least it's something, a little something, and so we're we're struggling with how do we support that piece of it without, you know, supporting the big tax increase, so. As far as if you're looking for guidance from us, I don't know what that guidance would be, cuz it's, we're in the, we're kind of in the same, I suspect, we're in the same thing. I, you know, if they end up doing it, I want us to get a fair share of it, even if I don't support it. If they do it, we should get a fair share, and not just the scraps they're throwing to, you know, counties and cities. You know, they're basically doing it to fix their problem there, meaning state, and, you know, culverts and different things, but they don't seem to really be acknowledging that our problems are just as big as theirs, and we don't have the ability to raise gas taxes or do any of that kind of stuff. It really is up to them. So I'll be curious what your engineers folks have to say on this.
Yeah, me too.
handle it, Gordy. You got it. We trust you.
Yeah, it's the, I think the current proposal for counties is really pretty small, and I think what the engineers are trying to lobby for is more. They, the legislative proposal, I think, gives 80 million to the CRAB board to distribute to all 39 counties. And then there's about 375 million of the 19 billion is all we would receive to share with the cities as well as the 39 counties. So it's really a small increase what's being proposed currently.
Right.
For local.
Is that, that, I mean, you're at the end of your memo you sent over. Do you have anything else before, if we have some questions?
Yeah, I don't know. Jeff, are you on the line? If you're on the line, Jeff may have something to add. I'll just check with him. Do you have anything to add?
Ah, no, it's the same thing you've just said, pretty much.
Okay.
Jeff, did you reach out to any of those people on the Title X Road Standards Committee group?
Yeah, I'm trying to set something up for latter part of February, probably. I haven't actually reached out to them yet, but I will to the whole group yet.
And Dan, did you get a chance to look over those names on that list?
I did. Gordy, I will throw one more thing up. I'm pretty sure I received an email about that CRAB board training, but I'm kind of trying to dive through my email right now to see if I can find it, and I didn't find it off the top of my head, so. I would be interested in attending that. Knowledge is a good thing, so remind me about it or send me a link or something, and that would be great. Thank you.
Will do.
And I'd be interested as well, Gordy.
Okay, yeah, I think they do a great job of training, so I'm sure it'd be worthwhile.
Yeah, I would definitely recommend it as far as I've been through it. And then a follow-up, I mean, that was a long time ago. I think Washington was a territory when I took it, so.
They talked about wagon wheels?
Yeah, they did. It was, yeah, yeah, CRAB board meant something completely different back then. But it is really good, and, you know, to kind of get the basic knowledge of it, so that's good. I did have one, just a quick question, Gordy. I did see, I actually got to observe the the West End crew was clearing down trees down in my part of the world yesterday, which they were doing really efficiently. But I did notice that they, and they do this, you know, on a regular basis, the trees, they, you know, if they're of a certain size, they were, they kept the logs, and I noticed that the, you know, chunks of logs, and they took them to one of the old rock pits. What do we do with those? Are those, maybe we've talked about this before, the possibility of making those available to folks to cut up for firewood. Some of, a lot of this was pine, but there were some oak pieces, which I was kind of surprised that some of, I mean, that wind was something, if it's knocking oak trees over that have been there for, you know, 200 years or something onto the road, but what do we typically do with those?
Um, try to get rid of them afterwards. Sometimes we burned them, and I think that the one time you were talking about, we had a very significant amount of logs, and we ground up some of those in a tub grinder. We allowed the public to come into one of our quarries and just have access to getting rid of it for us. Whoever showed up and did that. So we've done a lot of different things, but mostly it's just debris that we're trying to get rid of. Sometimes we'll leave it for the adjacent property owner and just lots of different things.
Okay. Well, I didn't know that we were gonna have a significant number of, you know, material that could be used for firewood because of the storm, then I would certainly be interested in letting folks have that if they wanted to. I guess that'd be a discussion. I mean, I know we've done it before, but we'd have to see about, you know, liability as far as having people in the pit, running their own chainsaws and stuff. It's,
Right.
question about that, but.
That could get messy.
Yeah, so, okay, that's curious.
Yeah, I'll let you know. I don't know how much they got. When I talked to them over the weekend, it was, you know. Twenty trees to twenty five throughout the the west area, so I I'm not sure they all went to the same location and. And, you know, whether some of it was just left, but uh anyway, I'll find out and get back with you next week.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other? Comments or uh questions for Public Works? Not seeing any. All right, thanks Gordy and Jeff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I did see. Uh, our next order of business is going to be a department update, the Natural Resource Economic Development. Uh Department. I do see Richard Foster. I don't know if I see. Mr. McClure on here yet. Could be on a phone call, though, so I'm not sure. So we'll. We'll wait, Dave, whenever you're. Come on the call or.
Call in.
Oh.
Thank you.
I believe Dave just uh he's heading on over there right now. He should be there in person.
Okay.
And it looks like Whitney's on the line as well.
That's true. I guess if we're not in the commissioner room, he could be in the commissioner room, right? Yeah, that's not a public meeting.
He's just now entering. She's on the line.
You want to turn the camera, Lee?
No, he's not in the room.
Oh, okay.
He's connecting to audio.
Okay. Yeah, this this is going to take a little getting used to.
Kind of hard to conduct business effectively and thoroughly this way.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. McClure. You must be on my second page.
I just scooted across the uh. Road there. I thought maybe you would receive one person at a time, but so it's all remote, I guess.
Yeah, it's all remote. That's we we have been given, doesn't like much wiggle room in any of it, so. Yeah.
Okay.
So whenever you're ready, we're running a little bit ahead, but that's okay.
Oh, okay. So maybe I'll start with the the natural resources side of the house. Since uh since we last had a department update, uh. Uh, we I knew uh natural resources program coordinator has come on board. Uh Whitney Rainer, uh she's on line with us today and maybe after I give a brief introduction, she can introduce herself. Uh, she grew up in Underwood and attended school in White Salmon. Uh, she has a BA in Biology and Environmental Science. And is currently living in Hood River and we're glad that uh. Uh, she accepted the offer and she's been a very busy person coming up to speed. She's she's now an official zoomologist, I think. Whitney, do you want to say anything or?
Uh, sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Nice to meet you virtually. Uh, yeah, and I'm happy to be aboard. Jake's been helping me come up to speed, as has Dave, and. The pleasure to meet you and excited to hit the ground running.
Good. Well, welcome. Welcome to the welcome to the county family and that's a. That's a great shop you've you're moved into over there. It's uh. Uh, there's been lots of really great county employees that have that Dave has found and we're sure he's done it again in uh. Uh, in you, so welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so so right now we've got, as I indicated, Whitney's been doing a lot of Zoom meetings. That's the that's the world we live in now. Uh, which is which is good. It's convenient to be able to start connecting uh with the network. Particularly in the salmon habitat recovery uh world. Uh, we're coming uh into the uh salmon recovery uh board process. That's where we provide a review of projects that are proposed for. Uh grant funding through the State Salmon Recovery Board. Uh, she's uh already gotten out there and advertised, uh done the requisite advertising for this round of funding. Um, and has uh put together a tentative schedule. So far it's uh looking good and hopefully it will hold. Um, we do have uh some appointments that we need to attend to in this process. It involves uh two committees, uh one of which is a citizen review committee. Uh, that has uh is under statutes to have a balance of interest on it. There are some that are. Uh specifically identified that need to participate. So we have two uh uh vacancies or two appointments to make. Uh, one of which will likely be a reappointment. Uh, um, it's for a group that needs to be represented on that and that's the Regional Fisheries Enhancement Group and they. One of their board members uh has been representing them for for years now, so. Uh, that's likely going to be a reappointment. Uh, the other uh vacancy we have is uh uh could be a reappointment. We I don't think we've got final word. Yet as to whether or not uh uh they will accept uh another term on the on the committee. Uh, they've represented either timber. I I can't recall exactly whether it's timber or the uh stakeholders group that the county has. The other committee is a technical committee. These are um fisheries and uh natural science. Folks that are working in the watersheds, our watersheds uh uh for salmon recovery. And we've got six of those members that need uh need reappointment. So uh, we've got a a bit of a schedule here. I think the uh. First meeting on the citizens committee is in mid-March. And the technical committee's first meeting is the fourth of March, so we need to get those uh those addressed. Uh, Whitney is also looking at our well monitoring program. Uh, Commissioner Chrisison, if if you're not familiar with that, the county monitors a network about a hundred and. Sixty, hundred seventy uh wells around the county to uh try to identify early on where we might be. Uh, gra- mining groundwater, you know, there's a unsustainable condition approaching. We've got. A couple of areas that we're watching closely and one of which we're we're. Encouraging folks to go to a deeper aquifer because the upper aquifer is um is is depleting.
Can you tell me where those are or should I talk to you later about that?
Uh, well, one of them's come up quite often. There's about a. Uh, thousand acre area roughly uh in uh the High Prairie area. About approximately where uh Struck Road intersects with for uh with uh the Lisle Centerville Highway. And we've been working with that community for years on this and. Uh, you know, I don't think there's anyone proposed to to do any building in there. It's been pretty quiet. Uh, but and Jake's been uh Jake Commissioner Anderson has been doing the monitoring for the last several years, so he's. Familiar. I believe the the water levels are still declining uh some, so we have to watch that area closely. The other one is. Sort of northwest of of Goldendale, uh and, you know, it's an area where it's challenging to get adequate. Adequate water. Uh, we do have, while it's not in the monitoring network, we do have an area on the uh far east of the county. Uh, where groundwater is being mined and and it's at significant levels. It's a, you know, we're we're at about a foot a year. Uh, and it's been a long time, but these are 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 deep wells that are used for irrigation. Uh, and we've been working to try to find uh uh some source exchange or something to do to. To try to address that that problem in a in in a long term. Uh, at some point, it the the pain will be such that it will start affecting. Uh, the agricultural development in the area and there's a lot of it. Okay, um, let's see. Uh, so you look last year, we're we're working on a project to look at uh potential water storage. Uh, sites in the Simcoe Mountains. There are a couple of streams that we're monitoring the flow to try to get an idea of how much. Uh, uh, water uh could be made available if uh if we build storage up there, so this is sort of exploratory. Uh, project. Uh, it was put on hold uh in twenty twenty due to COVID, so that will be uh picking back up. Uh, we are working on a another uh large storage project uh just south of uh Kennewick. Uh, now, uh both our salmon recovery and some of our watershed planning programs extend like from the White Salmon. All the way to Kennewick, uh and we're the lead agency on that watershed planning effort. So we're the lead on this project to look at a forty four thousand acre foot. Uh, off channels, storage, um they're just above McNary Dam in a canyon. Uh, that project was, you know, like everything else was slowed down last year. We're working on. Uh, getting a grant amendment to add some more funding to that. Uh, and uh, that should be coming uh in the not too distant future. I think we're this round, we'll probably get about a hundred and twenty thousand more. Uh, we're working on an environmental impact statement and that's a large, large effort. Um, uh, then I think uh, uh, the ecology's got us in the queue in in the governor's budget. I believe it's around another quarter million, something on the on on that order, but we won't know until the this session uh passes. Uh, right now, we know we've received scoping comments on the project. And uh so a lot of these cost increases are related to directly to the comments that were received. And needing additional work to uh provide the data uh that are necessary to address the comments in in the environmental impact statement. Um, let's see. One other thing I want to mention uh is the Water Conservancy Board. Uh, when Commissioner Anderson resigned from the board, that created a vacancy for the alternate position. Uh, so we need need to fill that. Uh, ecology, uh the the alternate uh person that fills this would need to complete. Thirty two hours of training in water law, et cetera. Uh, that's sponsored by the Department of Ecology. That occurs once a year and it's scheduled to happen uh the end of this month. I don't know if we'll make it. We've got, we're fortunate in that we have a five member board and all of those seats are filled. We have two alternate alternates and that was Commissioner Anderson and myself. And we were mostly there to fill in if there was a a shortage of commissioners where we needed. Uh, an additional body to make the quorum uh and get things acted on. Uh, so we need to fill that vacant position. Uh, I, we have not been appointed those by. By like Commissioner District or anything like that, but what we have done historically is to take a look at the geographic. Distribution of the appointees so that uh. When we do a water right change or working on one, uh then that location of that change is convenient. To at least one of the commissioners because we need to do a site visit and inspect the uh uh the water project. Uh, as part of the process. So we've got a couple of appointees on the east end. We have one in Lisle. And we have a a couple in uh the White Salmon Basin area. Uh, I would suggest that ideally we could, if we could find someone in in the Goldendale area, that would be great. Uh, so we can cover that. We just JP Enderby was a longtime member of that board and. So he sort of held down the middle, if you will. So that's that's coming up just to alert you and I think that's pretty much my summary on natural resources unless you've got questions there.
Any questions for Dave?
All right, so I'll move on to the economic development side of the house. Um, there's been uh. Um, you know, I think a bit of activity in the Dalles Port area, so we'll we'll sort of start there. Uh, and maybe uh Richard Foster's on the line and he's been working on uh securing a federal EDA. Grant for uh some uh infrastructure and uh uh buildings at the airport. And Richard, do you, can you update the board as to where we are on that?
Uh, yes, can you all hear me? Yeah, okay. Um, so we we just recently received our third official notice of carry forward. Letter. So basically, it's not a denial of the project, but it's basically a uh. RFI, Request for Information. Um, the RFIs that they had sent out on this most previous one. As well as some um, they they proposed a few changes to the scope of the project to make it smaller. Um, it it is a little bit concerning as as far as where they kind of want to put. The the new hangar out there at the airport. Um, but I have a discussion tomorrow with the federal EDA as well as the the a number of the parties that are involved. To try and hash it out. I do think that with the stuff that they've got with this most recent request from, you know, their their most recent. Recent RFIs, um, it sounds like if we're able to kind of come to an agreement that. That we're going to be able to move forward in that regard. So I I I do find this most recent one promising, but we do have a few things. That that need to be hashed out. So it's nothing set in stone and we're still hopeful with it.
Richard, could you elaborate on that or do you not want to as far as? I mean, how significant of a change? I mean, have they really scaled the the project as far as what or at least what they want this project to be? Or as you mentioned, location, is it just putting it in a different spot on the airport?
Yeah, so the the breakdown of it, what we really wanted from the county side was to get the infrastructure in there. If uh if if you might recall, and it wasn't so much the building, it was the infrastructure, so we could open up phase two of the airport, which had been planned. You know, however many years ago. Um, but the infrastructure, from my understanding, was was a good, was was a good chunk of the three and a half million dollar project. Um, and so instead of placing the hangar out there by the liflight building. Um, which is what we wanted to do to consolidate everything as well as open up the additional nine lots. Out there at the airport that we could utilize for um additional space uh for development. Um, they want to put it really uh much closer to the end of the road. And so there's a few different lots that they're looking at um that we're going to have to discuss if they decided to go that route. And, you know, I I've spoke, I've spoken to our public works. Um, it's it it's going to be an on ongoing discussion with with kind of all parties because. If, you know, if they move it closer, then the amount of dollars spent will be less. And so I would also suspect our eighty twenty ratio would also decrease as well. If if you remember that, uh, we we put up some some of the grant match on that. I would also suspect that would be reduced substantially as well, but as far as for us, the the developmental opportunities. It would just limit us. So I'm I'm still pushing for us to locate it where it was originally, but that's. That's going to be a compromise, I I would suspect.
Richard, some clarification. Uh, you said the eighty twenty ratio would decrease. I I think you meant the dollar amount would decrease. The ratio, would that not remain the same?
Or yes, I I apologize for misspeaking. Then, uh, thank you, Dave. Yeah, so the eighty twenty is still going to be there. Um, but our commitment would decrease so that because of the overall dollar amount. But that's another discussion that 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 I'm going to have to have with them just to make sure that it's very clear. to make sure that it's very clear, if that makes uh if that makes sense.
I think one of the uh uh good things with regard to this request for information uh that the building that's going to be built, part of it will be occupied by Columbia Gorge Community College to um have the shop, if you will, for an aviation maintenance program. And the other half of the building was to be occupied by a private business. Um Richard and I have been and 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 the community college have been in communication with a a business that's not from the gorge but is in the aerospace slash drone industry. Uh they are wanting to take the second half of the the building. Um and to some extent, probably significant extent, uh their ability to do that was contingent upon them being awarded a a contract by the Air Force and they've been notified that they have have won that contract and it should be in place in a a few months. So that's good news on that. Uh both both for the jobs, I think, what fifty, uh forty-five jobs, Richard? Is that the number of I recall, is that correct?
Uh how many did you say? I missed it, I'm sorry.
Forty-five?
Uh yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, good, that's great news. But of course, we got a half of the building that we're still haggling with him over. Okay.
Okay, I think continuing with the Dallesport thing, uh the, as you're aware, the Economic Development Authority Board met last month. Uh the port of Clickitat uh gave a presentation on uh the new business park they're uh working on in Dallesport at the at their properties in Dallesport and a building uh they're 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 working on. And and maybe I'll just, Richard's been working more hand in glove with the port on this project, so I again, I'll turn it back to Richard here so to update you where we are on that.
Uh thank you, Dave. Yeah, so we are currently in the midst of working with the uh with the Port of Clickitat on um on the agreement and everything for the uh the point oh nine request. Um as you gentlemen may be aware, it had, it has successfully passed through the uh Clickitat County Public Economic Development Authority Board. Um and so we're just, now now that I just came off vacation last week, this week, um and next week, I'll be putting together um everything that's going to be in line with the point oh nine request. Uh and then yeah, just moving forward with the port and building their, I believe it's building, the way they have it down is building one fifty-one C, which is about five thousand square feet of space.
Right, and as a reminder, uh the point oh nine or distressed county taxes revenue that the county receives out of the state's portion of the sales tax. Um and it's to be used for economic development projects. Um the board uh consults with uh EDA Board uh and the uh three mayors that sit on that on on the expenditures. So what the EDA did last month was formulate a recommendation for this project to the county commissioners, which ultimately makes the decision on funding or not funding. And in support of that, and we'll get some more, Rich, Richard's going to be busy here today. We needed to, the the county has an economic development strategy that you've adopted. It was developed by the Economic Development Authority and then recommended to the county commissioners, which adopted it. Appendix four to that strategy is a project list. And the point oh nine or distressed county funds are controlled by statute and the projects to utilize those funds for uh uh public economic development facility, it needs to be on that list. Uh so that the EDA Board uh considered amendments to the to the list to include um this port project and three projects that Clickitat Valley Health has uh that they want to pursue grant funding for. Uh so Richard will be working on uh that amendment and it's, again, it's been adopted, that amendment's been adopted by the the EDA Board, so we'll bring it to you um and see if you want uh to officially adopt it uh to the strategy that that the county has.
Okay, uh Dave or Richard, when would you anticipate doing that as far as bringing it for, so we can take some kind of formal action on that? I'm assuming that needs to be done um because a list has to be updated uh before we do the uh project for the port, definitely, um and then the other ones as well.
So I, that would uh that would be done in the next couple of weeks. Um I'll be working with the port um on developing the the contracts with them too. So um yeah, I would, I would suspect the the resolution will be in shortly. It it's it's not that difficult to put it in for you guys. So uh the big thing is going to be that with with the port is making sure that they're tracking on on all the requirements and how how we uh how we work, so.
Do you know, I I don't know, um I don't want to beat this dead horse, but I know there's been some discussion that, at least with WAC at the state level, with um the use of nine dollars to ports and the state auditor's office has raised concerns that they are not, that they potentially are not an eligible um entity to receive the point oh nine dollars. Do you know anything about that and are we, it's it's um, is this a similar situation or it could be a similar situation?
I think that question came up with a project in Benton County, if I'm not mistaken. And I took a look and I'm just not seeing anything on it really. Uh so I don't know that I have any further clarification, it's just, and I don't know the the particulars of the project that was done in Benton County, so I'm I'm just not
Okay.
Clear. We we have historically funded, I mean, I mean, it's been, the port has been a major recipient over the years of this, so uh it may be how how they awarded the project. For example, did they just just do it and not consult with the the associate development organization, which is like the EDA or or those cities that, I don't know if they dotted all their i's and crossed their t's on that, so we'll continue to look at that.
Okay. Yeah, because that's my, you know, my uh observation is we have, we have done lots of these projects with the port um over the years. And if the prohibition was on ports in general, then that would have a, that would have a pretty major impact across the state, uh because we're not alone in that. I mean, these, these have been done all over the state. So I'm 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 assuming it had something to do with that specific project with that specific port, so um okay.
And and if I recall correctly, that the port, ports are mentioned in the statute somewhere, but I I'd have to go back and it's been a few weeks. I remember when that first popped on the radar here, it's been a couple of months, several months ago, and I took a look, so I I will drill down into that and and I think consult with the prosecutor's office and probably the auditor, make sure we're we're straight.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Commissioner Christopher, I'd like to make sure we check with the prosecutor on that, too.
All right.
Okay, continue, please.
Okay, um let's see, continuing on in Dallesport, uh uh, well, it's been at least twenty-five years, I think, that there's been a, and I think it goes even back to the into the eighties that a, you know, golf course was proposed down there on some property adjacent, on the airport and adjacent to the airport. And that's evolved and then there was uh some housing uh development associated with that. Uh that has gone dormant for a year or better, um but we've been contacted by the landowner um and they're interested in seeing what they can do there. Uh these are the heirs of uh the the landowners that were originally involved. So uh they have families evidently designated a point person for them that to try to see what can be done. He he lives on the east coast now and will be in town uh on the twenty-second, twenty-third of this month, uh it's a Monday and Tuesday. And uh I think I want to try to arrange uh maybe some some meetings. Uh uh perhaps, I I am thinking uh Commissioner Anderson because uh uh you're on the airport board and there's some airport involvement in this, some of it would be on their land and Commissioner Soder, that's your district. Um Commissioner Christopher, these will need to be separate meetings um because of quorum concerns, but uh you know, Commissioner Christopher, if you want me to schedule you a time as well, I could.
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, um, oh, and I I think back to the uh the the ports project there. Um been, Richard's been working on a business retention expansion project, another aerospace company. Uh they are looking to move into that building. I think they employ six now. Um uh and similar to the other company I'm, that's taking the building, uh that will be looking at citing in the uh co-locating with the community college there in that hangar. Uh they are waiting, this particular company's waiting on a a a contract. We should hear pretty soon on that, so the port uh will, I believe, has a tenant that's ready to go to go for that project. Uh Mayor Cannon uh reached out, it was the day the the Economic Development Authority met regarding uh needing to replace a life pack uh for the fire department. Um Richard sent him the same day a uh an application for community development funds. Uh he didn't get back with the application, so we didn't discuss it at the Economic Development Authority meeting. Uh I've since heard from Mayor Cannon and I'm not clear at this point if he will be submitting an application for some funding to pay for part of that life pack. Uh but he did uh bring up a ladder truck. I think the the city has brought this to the board previously, so we will, just a second, excuse me. I'm getting a call from Las Vegas. I've probably gotten my social security number stolen again. Um so we, I I I think there's interest on the part of the city in in discussing that fire truck again, and I I was not involved in any of those discussions, so just a, just an FYI there.
I know they, at least the council members, aren't interested in the county's uh help on that life pack, so um keep keep following up on that for me, will you please?
Yes. Okay, um on sort of the workforce development front, uh Richard's working with one of our aerospace companies to try to secure uh some funding for incumbent worker training. We've worked with them before, we need to get additional businesses because the dollars won't go to a um uh one, one company, it needs to be more broadly open uh because there'll be state dollars, but he's working on that. It's good to see that uh uh they're seeking incumbent worker training so that in these, this day and time. On business retention front, uh bill's working its way through the legislature on how to expand the federal funding that's anticipated related to coronavirus. Uh currently, uh that bill's earmarked uh two-hundred-and-forty million for um additional small business emergency grants. Uh it, this is changing and we don't have a final um word from Con, from the Department of Commerce, which would administer that money, uh as to how they're going to get that out, but it's looking uh very much like it will go through a single application portal uh like they did for the Working Washington Three grants. And our involvement might be in the uh get, you know, public, uh you know, make sure the public's aware, businesses are aware of the the funding's available and then providing assistance as might be needed to apply for the funding, but more to come on that. It would be helpful, you know, from my perspective, that port, method of using the portal, it it has a distinct advantage in that they have been able to just give the funding as a, as a a block grant, if you will, to the business, contingent on attesting to a few things, um and not requiring a cost reimbursement uh process to get the dollars, which is, was extremely painful uh during, you know, previous rounds of funding, so. So more to come on that, and that's being fast-tracked from what it looks like, that that bill. Uh other sort of rounding out for the day, uh Buildable Lands Inventory, that project was put on hold, I gave the contractor a stop work order last, last year because we just didn't have the bandwidth to work on it here in my, in my office with the, with the small business grants. We're picking that back up. We will need a contract amendment because that contract ended at the end of twenty-twenty. Uh right now, I think the balance in the budget's about eleven thousand. Uh uh we are reviewing uh draft work product on it and contingent upon the condition of that, we should have enough money, but I want to be sure before I get that contract amendment to you that we don't have additional work that needs to be done. I know one, one thing that we want them to do is to go back and re-interview the port of Clickitat now that they have a new executive director, make sure that um uh what what's in there for port properties, related to port properties, being consistent with with where the port is at this point. I think that's most of it.
Can I chime in for one last thing, boss man?
Sure.
Um so just uh uh every five years, MCD, the Mid-Columbia Economic Development District that covers three red, uh three counties and the Columbia River on the Oregon side and and as well as us in Skamania County, every five years, they go through a comprehensive economic development strategy, um just process uh to update everything. So once the point oh nine, or once the countywide uh project list has been approved, um we have a smaller list that we'll send up to MCD, to to MCD, but uh in the meantime, they're going through the the whole process of uh restrategizing uh a lot of their stuff. So that's actually going to be occurring uh today. Um I'm on the steering committee for that and that's going to, that's probably going to take a few months for them to go through the whole process, but it's out there. Thank you.
Thanks for remembering that, Richard.
Okay, I did have one, um I guess, up question, um since I'm now serving on the MCD board. Um I was, I don't know if you were aware, but there were um in, I guess, last fall, in the federal appropriation, the budget that was adopted, they um they did appropriate, so it was the two million, which is the last two million and million dollar uh commitment when the National Scenic Area Act was passed for economic development um dollars. Uh the two million was appropriated and we have been, I guess, negotiating, I guess would be the term I would use. Uh we have not been eligible for those dollars in Clickitat County for, these would be um for grants or, they're typically for loans for business development in the for grants or they're typically for loans for business development in the scenic area. Because there was a determine made, determination made in the past and until the county adopted the ordinances and administered them itself, it was ineligible for the economic development program. That's not been our position. Our position has been the Scenic Act ordinances are enforced, they are be, it's just not us doing them. The relevance though is that when this appropriation was done, they specifically did not put that language in the appropriation language. And so it now appears and USDA has agreed that this $2 million that's coming to the gorge for programs, Clickitat County will be eligible to participate in that. And so, so thanks to our federal delegation and other folks that we've, we've, we were successful. MCD board did vote to that or make it available half in Oregon, half in Washington. So there will be a $1 million on our side. I will say, Skamania EDC is not really thrilled with this because for the past 30 years, basically, Skamania has been the only player in this because we're out of it. Clark County only has about 6,000 acres that's in the scenic area. And so very, very few potential businesses in Clark County that's eligible. In fact, Skamania EDC, I think, has been administering it for the Washington side. And so I'm curious if you've heard anything about this, know anything about it. You know, the dollars have not been appro, have not been released yet. MCD will have to make the application to be the pass through. But the, the plan at this point would be half, half will be administered through the Oregon Investment Board on the Oregon side and it would go to the Washington Investment Board on the Washington side.
Right. No, I had not been tracking that. I, I, I was operating under the assumption that, you know, if that gets, it would be subject to the same control starting Clickitat County as previously. So I have not been tracking that. And as you indicated.
So that's, that's a big deal and, and I think we need to be aggressive in that, you know, of the eight, 4 million of that has been on the Washington side and 4 million of it has basically gone to businesses in Skamania County, which is good. I mean, I don't have any issue with that. I feel like time for us to go share those dollars. And so I want to, I want to aggressively market that or, or business that may have some projects out there that they're able to apply for this, for these dollars and understanding that Skamania EDC is not real happy about this.
Yeah, I, and I, yeah, as you indicated, they have been administering the Washington side of it. So I don't, is, is, maybe we can talk offline, is whether MCD's thinking they're going to administer part of it that's available here, but I, I have a couple of questions, but. And, and mentioning Skamania EDC, their Economic Development Council, as you may recall, we're working with them to get a, a Small Business Development Center advisor stationed in the two counties in split time between the two. We are waiting on a draft of a, a contract from Washington State University to, to move that forward. We do need to work out some, some sort of a memorandum of understanding with Skamania County and their Economic Development Council regarding, you know, that, that division of, of time and how that's going to work, but we're still waiting on that. However, I've been, I've been reaching out to the Washington Small Business Development Council for, for support. For example, last week I met with a, a small business owner here in the Golden Dale area that, that was kind of hitting the wall and contacted the SBDC and, and they immediately assigned an advisor and as, you know, as, as of yesterday, they're in communication with these people and trying to get them assistance. You know, they've already applied for a PPP loan, but make sure that is all in order and then look at the IDA loan and some other things that might be available as well as some general consulting services. So they are responding to our requests for, for help where we, where we find they could be helpful. So we're looking forward to having someone here full time in the two counties.
Good, thanks Dave. Oh, one, one thing back on the, the scenic area grant loan program. I think there's still some discussion too, that there might even be enough leeway that this does not, it would be eligible for anybody in the entire county, not just within the scenic area. So we could, that's been my position. I've been trying to, you know, the economic development activity takes place, doesn't stop at a border of a scenic area and that we potentially, so folks in Golden Dale or, or anywhere. But I don't, I don't know that that, again, we have no history with this fund because we've been shut out of it for 30 years. So we're going to have to learn in a hurry, I think.
Right. It'd be interesting to see. I, I, I have not looked at how that operates. Again, because we haven't qualified, MCD does operate some other pots of money that are available for loans to businesses and businesses in, in Golden Dale and elsewhere in the county have, have accessed loans through that, but they're, it's sort of almost like a lender of last resort and that, you know, their, their rates are, are up there and you need to be declined by a, a bank to be able to, to get those, those loans. So I, I don't know if the, this, this new scenic area money will be, you know, again, a little bit above, above market rate and in the time of COVID, that could be scary dollars for a business.
Okay.
Good news, we're being considered.
Yeah, good news to be that, I don't know if that was, you know, oversight or we were kind of working the language. So, because there is, there, which will lead me to believe there's always been some discretion that they chose to not do it. But that's, that's a personal thought. Questions for Dave?
Questions, not questions for Dave, but comments that, that possible change is very good news. Encouraging news. Can't wait to hear more about it.
I had some discussions with Tammy with Skamania County EDC about, about that before. And that was before we'd heard that the, the numbers were going to change and that we would be eligible. The question I think we're going to need is, is Skamania County's been administering this and managing this. I think that the EDC is going to be willing to continue to manage that. If we, if they want, we want, rather than recreating the wheel, we could let them house those dollars and then we could have a say in what happens in Clickitat County with our portion. It might be the easier action than trying to create our own new wheelhouse just to manage $500,000. So that's something that we'll probably want to discuss in the future when we get a little bit more down that road. Dave, I have, when we talked about Dalsport and that triangle piece of property, somebody reached out to me about that and potential for the RFP. They were wondering when would that happen and because they're looking at it because that's part of the opportunity zone. So they're looking at that as being an opportunity zone investment. That kind of piqued my interest because I didn't think we'd had actually many opportunity zone movement within the county or people that are interested in it. So hopefully in the near future, we can get that run down to find out what we can and cannot do with that property and in how that could work.
Yeah, I have not, I have not been with Gordy yet about that and, and, you know, I, I don't have, I'm not knowledgeable about how the county has, what, what hurdles we need to jump through to dispose of that property or enter into a public-private partnership or something. So I think we've got some, some legwork to do on that. And as you're aware, there's also some potential activity down at the Clickitat Mill that there's a property owner down there that's interested in moving forward and there's some discussions happening among the parties that are interested in that property and potential projects. So we need to see, we need to check on both of those and you've mentioned the Clickitat Mill previously.
I wasn't going to bring it up this time. Hopefully we can get a meeting with that set up soon.
Okay, anything else for these fine folks before we send them on their way?
No, I think we're keeping them pretty busy.
Yeah, that's good. That's economic development department. That's a good thing. That's what you want.
Kind of, except for he's going to come in wanting some more staff here real soon, so.
Oh, that's, yeah. All right. Well, if we don't have anything else, do we have any other, that's the end of our, our morning agenda?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Okay, I guess let's go ahead and we can break for a little early, but that's, I got some stuff to look over here. So, all right. Well, if I don't hear otherwise, we will adjourn. The morning session will be back at 1 o'clock. So see all you folks then. To order, let the record show that all three commissioners are present virtually in the meeting. I would recommend that we dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance until we're back together in chambers together. It would be a little difficult to do, I think, remotely. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the business agenda with the changes of removing adult probation at 1:30 and we'll be adding a discussion with Riverfront Park Properties.
Okay.
I will.
Motion. Okay, I have a motion in a second to adopt the business agenda with the so-mentioned changes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Brings us to.
I know we had meeting minutes. We had two of them that were submitted. Did you guys get to read over those?
Yeah.
I did.
I don't have the dates in front of me, so if you do, you can go or I can look at my emails and pull them up.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from January 19th, 2021 as submitted.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
You do, but I thought we had the one from last month as well.
That is that one, Janu, January 19th.
Okay, so we're not doing the, the second that was put out, I think, this morning? All right, we'll, we'll do the 19th and move on from there. I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We, I have a motion in a second to approve the January 19th meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from February 2nd, 2021 as submitted.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second on the February 2nd meeting minutes. Can you discuss those? Hearing none or seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, that brings us to citizen comment. Comments will be limited to seven minutes per individual. So if there's anybody on the Zoom meeting or on your phone that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners, this is your time. Please give your name. If you can raise a hand, if you can, if you're on the Zoom platform, we can look for that. Or if you're on the phone, if you just unmute yourself, I need your name and your, where you live, just for the record.
My name is Debbie Wagner. I'm part of CESE. I just have a few issues to talk about solar. My address is 303 Fish Hatchery Road. We have approximately one half of a year of sunshine. I don't know how these solar companies can come in here and be successful. They will not. We also, our state is fifth on the list for the worst place for solar. It's under the SEIA on the internet. It's out there. Takes two seconds to look it up. But you possibly put solar where the old aluminum plant was. This would not create as much of a problem for all our homeowners. We have kids on our street. Excuse me. One last comment. Please do not desecrate our farm. As the ordinance are set right now, we have no protection as citizens and could be killed. Please, Mr. Sauter and Mr. Anderson, get behind your citizens. Now is the time. We know Dan is behind our cause of cease. If for 30 seconds, Mr. Sauter and Mr. Addison Anderson, if you could please close your eyes and envision what our properties would look like if the batteries proposed explode. Right now, there's supposed to be two acres of batteries behind our homes. I know what it would look like. No more citizens, lots of class. I'm sorry. No more homes in the area. I ask you, Mr. Sauter and Mr. Anderson, could you take view in the devastation that would occur? Have a nice day. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Okay, we're, we're in citizen comment. Other citizens wish to address the board on any topic? I'm not seeing any raised hands in the chat. Okay. Well, we will be in citizen comment until 1:30. So if anybody that are joining late or change, please unmute yourself and give us your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Greg Wagner.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm going to, oh, Mr. Wagner, can you, can you defer to the other person?
No problem.
Thank you.
Russ. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Russ Hansen at number 10 Tucker Hill Road in Golden Dale. And I just, two points I'd like to bring up. There are points that you guys have actually discussed prior. Number one is the appeal fee for these projects, large projects like wind and solar that was brought up last week. And I just really encourage you guys to revisit that and, you know, make that something that's more equitable for those of us who live in this community and don't have to come up with $4,000 and maybe raise the application fee on these multi-billion dollar companies. That would be something that would be easy to do and would help out. The other thing is, you had mentioned before about the 1,500 foot minimum setback. Looking at Cypress Creek's planned, they're allowing 500 feet, which in my case doesn't even go to my property line because where the house is, it's over 800 feet. So they're actually allowed to come right up to my property line on three sides. 1,500 feet, this is what you give for wind turbines. So I, I think it's only fair that we at least get that much for solar. And so those are the two issues I wish that you guys would readdress and, you know, make a decision on those. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Wagner, you had.
Hello, my name's Greg Wagner, 303 Fish Hatchery. I'm a member of CESE. For four months CESE has been informing you about the hazards and dangers of industrial scale solar farm. For four months CEES has been informing you about the hazards and dangers of industrial-scale solar farm. CEES has asked for a moratorium on December 4th to update the ordinance to address our concerns. It was not enacted. The commissioners know they need updating but refuse to do so. On January 5th, Commissioner Christopher made a moratorium motion only to have Anderson and Sauter vote against it. Anderson states the moratorium is bad for our county and Sauter is concerned on the tough ordinances will just scare away the solar companies and the tax revenue. Neither reason sounds like they are concerned about the citizens. On January 14th, during the closed solar workshop, Mr. Sauter allowed Brian Walsh from Avon Bridge Solar Corporation representative to speak and did not give any citizens equal time to speak. All our microphones were muted. This shows that Mr. Sauter favors the solar companies over the citizens. On February 2nd, Commissioners' meeting, Mr. Christopher brought up reviewing the E O Z and the need for solar changes, but both Mr. Anderson and Mr. Sauter just sat there and looked at him saying nothing. Again, shows they do not care. CEES has obtained the Cypress Creek Renewable Solar Plan, which will be built west of town. It has two acres of lithium-ion battery storage buildings, which have the explosive potential of many tons of TNT, which will injure and kill our citizens. If the Commissioners allow this to be built, shows they just do not care about the citizens, then we are sacrificial. If they live next to this, they would care. This means you, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Sauter. We pay you and we, we want you to be proactive, not reacting. We demand that you not allow this solar plan of Cypress Creek to happen. Thank you very much.
Okay, actually, Mr. Wagner, if you're still on there, um, I would just, uh, follow up. You say you're, you're, um, you have attained the plan. I would be curious about that since I, I'm not aware of a plan and I have not seen a plan. I was curious where you got that, because there has been no project submitted at this point.
It's a, it's a pre-submission plan dated 11/12/21, and it tells what they plan to do here along with the parcel numbers. It's a 14-page document with the Cypress Creek Renewable letterhead on it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wagner, can you give that date again? I think you said 11/12/21.
Yeah, you need to say 11/12/20.
I'm sorry, 11/12/20.
Thank you for your clarification, sir.
But that, that information, the whole documents printed out, all 14 pages came out clearly except that date. It was cut in half, so it's hard to read.
We are still in citizen comment until 1:30. So any citizens on any topic, unmute yourself or raise your hand if you are in the Zoom format. I do see a raised hand, um, Mister, I'm assuming it's, uh, Dave Barta. Go ahead and unmute yourself and.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you taking time to listen today. Um, I guess I have a question. Maybe it's for you, Commissioner Sauter first. And that really is, you know, as, as you know, the final environmental impact statement is now 17 years old, just about, will be shortly. Do you think, in your opinion, do you think that, uh, final environmental impact statement anticipated the placement of two acres of storage batteries on any project? Or do you know if the wind generation stores electricity using large batteries? Do you know?
I don't have an answer for that. I, I don't know. Um, if I'm speculating, I would say, you know, 17 years ago, it's, um, battery technology 17 years ago is not what it is today, and so, um, I guess I would let you draw your own conclusions from that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at a recent meeting, I guess let me back up a second. I, I guess perhaps, I don't know of any wind-related batteries, but I, I, there's a lot of things that I don't know. Um, the, the current map that Mr. Wagner addressed shows this two-acre facility a little bit, I'll call it, uh, west-northwest of the BPA station. And that's in a pre-plea, I, excuse me, a pre-planning map that, that has been submitted. I would just encourage the Commissioners to investigate that closely. At a recent meeting, and I think it was the solar workshop, forgive me if I'm wrong, the Commissioners discussed, uh, perhaps engaging a Citizens Advisory Committee, and I think they, they used a term something like the Natural Resources Advisory Committee. Has any progress been made on that, to your knowledge?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay, is that anything the concession, the Commissioners continue to consider?
I would say that is something this Commissioner continues to consider. I don't think the board has had a discussion on it.
Okay, thank you for, I appreciate you, uh, considering my questions. That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I see, um, a hand raised, looks like Deacon.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner, Deacon Letnich with Labor's Local 335 in Vancouver. Uh, I wanted to take a moment to, uh, encourage this Commission to continue to consider the possibility of the solar project and also the upcoming battery pump storage project. I'm hearing the, the citizens of Clickitat County raise concerns about explosions and other issues with the project, and I, I think that they are likely valid, and I, I don't mean to discount or discredit them in any way, but, uh, I would just like to let it be known that on behalf of the over 500 working men and women that would benefit greatly in Clickitat County and from our, our membership standpoint, uh, we would encourage you to continue considering moving forward with these projects and, uh, would like to support you however possible. And if, uh, Commissioner Christopher has a question, I would be more than happy to attempt to answer it unless he was signaling somebody, somebody off camera.
There was a question, I'm glad you saw it. I had a question on your address. If I remember right, you're Vancouver, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I, I do live in Vancouver and our, our office is in Vancouver, but we have, I couldn't tell you exactly, but I could guess a fair amount of members that live in Skamania, Clickitat County and work in that area when, when possible.
Right.
Nope, just wanted clarification. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Uh, if, if there's nothing else, that, that was the gist of it. We're, we're here to uh, encourage and support the project, but we're also very cognizant of the concerns of the, the citizens, so thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, we are still in citizen comment until 1:30, so if there are other citizens that wish to.
Elaine has her hand up.
Okay, Elaine, I must be on my next screen over.
Good afternoon, um, Commissioners, Elaine. I live at 435 Hillville. And, um, so I have a question in regards to the water pump storage. Cause I just read an article online where the Cypress Creek Renewables are now associated with that project. Is that right?
Not that I'm aware of, but I don't know for sure.
Well, there's an article. It's, it's, it's Associated Press article. Um, anyways, they're associated. Now they're a part, or they've all been all along a part of the water pump storage project. And also, it says Cypress Renewables closed a $200 million financing deal as a holding company for the water pump storage. And anyways, this Cypress Creek is also associated with the solar project at night. Is that right?
That's was, again, not to my knowledge, but that's what, um, Mr. Wagner said there was at least, or I'm trying to look back through my, my notes as far as there uh, is a, was a pre-submission plan, uh, apparently, so.
Yeah.
But according to this news article that you're reading in the 200 million, the, the pump storage project, if it's my recollection, is a $2 billion project. Uh, much more than 200 million, so I, I will have to look into that article to.
Yeah, I can, I can forward you guys the article. Um, they're also part of the Klamath Falls Water Pump Storage Project. And my question is, the water pump storage project, are, is it even included in the wind farm E O Z? Is the E O Z, did it foresee, did it encompass this water pump storage and the impacts that, that pump storage is going to have?
I, I couldn't say, but I, my, my inclination would be to say no as far as specifically. Because the, at least my involvement with pump story, the pump storage project, uh, came after the adoption of the overlay zone. So I don't know.
I believe you corrected there, but I'm not positive. I'm looking now, but.
I mean, there may have been some consideration of pump storage as far as in the O Z, but probably not this, you know, necessary specific project.
I would agree.
You know, this is a big issue, and this is Clickitat County. This is Yakima Nation's seed of lands. We have Yak, we have cultural resources. We have a lot of interest in this land. This is, this, you know, is seeded by Yakima Nation, and we have rights here. And the water pump storage is, is a secret site to the Yakima Nation, and when the E O Z does, does not pertain anything for water pump storage and solar, you know, those are impacts to our cultural resources, is our impacts to the environment. Those are impacts, you know, to everything, and, and Clickitat County shouldn't be pursuing all these billion, million-dollar projects when they don't have any ordinance, ordinances in place, especially to protect residents. There's a lot of, um, residents that will be impacted by these projects. And, um, you know, the water pump storage, um, should be included in the E O Z. That's a billion, multi-billion dollar project. And it's going to have grave impacts to the wildlife, to everything in that whole area. And possibly to the fish in the Columbia, because who knows how much the water is going to evaporate and they're going to keep pumping from the Columbia. In 2015, we had a big fish kill in the Columbia River of sockeye salmon and sturgeon, a big fish kill. Million, thousands of fish died. It's, it's in every newspaper. So these projects have potentially impact the environment, the water, residents, public safety, and, um, you know, it's just, you know, disheartening that you guys are pursuing all these projects and not considering the local impacts to the county, to the residents, to the environment. And that's all I'm going to say right now.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Although I, I do, I do want to set the record straight, as I think folks are, are, uh, misunderstanding just because something was or was not considered in the E O Z, that does not mean that any of these projects, that there are not environmental standards, that there are not processes that they go through that do consider all of the impacts at local to wildlife, to water resources, to all of those, uh, things. And so whether it's solar pump, storage, wind projects, whatever it is, and so this, there's, I think there, I don't want to have a, um, narrative that is incorrect, that it's like, oh, well, if it's, if it's, uh, not in there, that that means, oh, you can just do anything that you want. Absolutely not. It's actually the opposite, as far as that there are high levels of environmental review. The, the pump storage project, as is, is, um, it's in the process, I mean, it's just beginning a process right now. There will be extensive, uh, consultation with, uh, tribal folks that they will have to be as far as about cultural resources and also wildlife and water. And with that, I will, I will, uh, recognize Commissioner Christopher had either a question or a comment.
I did. You, you kind of hit the nail on the head there. So let's say pump storage is in the E O Z and they had a, uh, environmental impact, you know, whatever, 19 years ago. But again, echoing Commissioner Sauter, it is going through the Department of Ecology right now, uh, for a bigger, more in-depth. Uh, there had scoping meetings last week that I attended. There was another one this week that I believe Mr. Sauter attended, where the public can, uh, raise its concerns to ecology and what they want ecology to check out. It will be a big, deep, in-depth process. The Yakima Nation will be, uh, have their say in it. I guarantee you that one.
Okay, we are still in public comment. Not, uh, Dave Barta has his hand raised. Uh, I don't know if it's still raised or raised again. And if we don't, generally, I only let people go once, but if there is no other commenters at this point, I'm not seeing any. So, Mr. Barta, did you have another question or did you just forget to put your hand down?
I forgot to tell you my address is 428 Fish Hat Tree Road.
Alright.
But I have one further question, and that is, you all discussed last week, I believe, the appeals rates. Do you can, are you going to consider that further in a way that you think will result in action as far as the cost for appeals for individuals? Do you have any comment on that?
Um, I would comment, I, I did speak with, I, I have every expectation that we're, we're scheduling a workshop with the Planning Director, uh, Planning Staff, uh, to continue the discussion, and I, I can't, I can't speculate as far as, is that going to, are we going to end up with, you know, changing those, lowering them, getting rid of them? I, I couldn't say, because that'll be a board action. And I think that's what the board's interested in, the workshop to kind of get the information. And then they'll make a decision then, but I know we are going to be having a, we are going to be having a discussion, and I think, uh, Planning Staff is trying to get information from other counties of similar size on, you know, kind of what other folks do on this issue. Commissioner Christopher.
I just wanted to make a, a mention to him that, that I did not forget about it, and I will bring it up again. Um, we'll see where it goes, but it, it isn't over.
Okay, thank you both for your input. I appreciate it.
Okay, five more minutes in citizen comment. Oh, either. Okay, go ahead. If you can give your, give your name and where you live, please.
We're Rosale Dimick, 55 Tucker Hill Road. And I wrote, um, email to you, um, gentlemen, um, earlier this week. Anderson, um, your, uh, your email is incorrect on the county website. It got sent out to me. But just, I want to check, um, and fix that to the residents so they can still reach you. Um, my question that I asked in my email was, um, the resolution, the 10910. Um, it says that, uh, E O Z, uh, should be reevaluated, um, public hearing should take place for seven years. And it's been over seven years. Just wondering why that public hearing isn't taking place. And, um, would just like to hear back on the reasoning why that, um, why that's not happening, because it's supposed to be, uh, to address our issues and so that we can, uh, face um, solutions to these, um, problems that we, um, have. Thank you.
Okay, this Dimick, I'm, I'm going to actually take that one, because I, I did respond to your email and it, and as far as that resolution did cover that said that there would be a, uh, it actually was a, uh, from a, it was a settlement agreement from the, from the passage of the E O Z that said that the board, then, the then-board agreed that after seven years or 1,000 megawatts of wind, that they would have a public hearing to revisit the E O Z and see if there was some changes needed to be made to it. That hearing did occur. It occurred in, um, uh, 2010, I believe, 2011, somewhere in there, because we had, the seven years had not passed, but we had, we had passed the 1,000, uh, megawatt threshold, and so, uh, again, I just want to be, make sure it's crystal clear as far as the board did do what it said it was going to do. Again, I would remind folks, that was a different board. That wasn't, I wasn't even on that board, but the board did have its public hearing. It did revisit that. I don't, uh, unless you're making a suggestion that every seven years, we need to have a review.
That's what it ordered. It's worded every seven years.
Okay, well, I will look into that, because I don't, I don't have it in front. That seems, I.
I'm able to call in. I don't have, um, the ability to see who's talking, and so I, I don't even know who's talking at the moment. I'm assuming it's, it's Christopher, but I'm not entirely sure.
That was, it actually was David Sauter. I'm sorry. I will, I will, for folks on the phone, uh, I, I forgot you can't actually see us to know who's talking, so.
Yeah, and I would hate to, uh, misrepresent any of you folks, um, on that, on that. I mean, but, yes, it says, uh, Yes, it says every seven years or ten thousand or thousand megawatts. And it's time for, it's time for checkup and it's time for our public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Anderson.
Dave, I'd just like to say, I'm just looking at the county website, and under county commissioners, as well as the staff directory, my email is correct. So, Ms. Demick, if you could send me that email again and try using that address. Thank you very much.
Okay, we got one minute left in citizen comment. On any topic, does not have to be about solar or pump storage. I'm not seeing anybody. All right, with that. We will go on with our regular agenda. So I don't know if. White Salmon Mayor, Mayor Keefler and the city clerk treasurer, Jan Branding, if you are on the Zoom. Oh, there we are.
Hello, nice to see you.
That's good to see you as well.
Well, I I'm not Jan Branding, but.
Yes, so you're gonna, you're gonna participate. Are you there in Janstead, or are you representing, I mean, you obviously always represent yourself, Pat, but.
No, I'm here with Marla, so.
Okay. All right, great, so. Go ahead and set up the topic if you wish.
Certainly. So this was certain, a late addition to your meeting today, which I realized, but I think Commissioner Anderson, we had reached out to him last. Yesterday, actually, to bring him up to speed on some ideas that we are working on here in the city. Mainly because there was some county land that would be affected by those ideas, and we were hoping to bring you guys into the fold. And he brought it to our attention that some of those lots were currently underway to getting processed through to be auctioned off. And so what we wanted to discuss today with the larger commission. Was what this project was and a consideration of if it was appropriate and. Made sense for the city to consider purchasing that land, but the deadline importance issue at hand is really. These lots in question that I understand need to either be pulled today. To not have them go forward into an auction, or hear the commissioner's viewpoints on the best way to handle this. And then also Commissioner Sauter. Kind of going along with that same conversation is a revisiting of the riverfront park conversation, which I think is familiar to you. And certainly has been talked about over the years, but all of this kind of comes together as sort of our vision for the city of White Salmon to best capitalize on. Anticipating a new bridge with pedestrian access. And so what we're really envisioning is seeing that riverfront park come to fruition, and so we thought this would be appropriate time to revisit. Where we stood on those discussions about potentially a city lease. But then if you were to cross this new bridge, the county land that we had talked to Commissioner Anderson about yesterday is actually just south of Dock Grade Road. And our vision at the city to actually create a bluff loop trail that could bring pedestrians. Or those with wheelchairs or strollers or bikes all the way up into downtown White Salmon by taking advantage of that trail. Having also some stairs and a inclined gravity pooled system, also known as, one of my favorite words, a funicular. So that's a pretty big summary to bring you guys up to speed quickly, but. Jake, I don't know if you had already briefed them a little bit, or if there was a direction you wanted to start this conversation, since it's kind of about two different things. But again, the main issue that was on our radar this morning was just certainly this time sensitive topic about these two lots. South of Dock Grade that the city is interested in using.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Christopher.
Question, are these dock grade properties? I know last year a gentleman that owns property on Dock Grade wanted to do some kind of land transfer. And you pushed him off and told him that the properties are gonna be for sale. Are these the properties that you told him were going to auction, or are we talking something different?
No. My, my expectation, that's, that is these properties that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I guess the most, we can probably, since we only have a certain amount of time, we should push off the the park discussion. The main thing is, is if, if the board, and I hope Greg's on here, so he can give us direction. He was supposed to be talking to the prosecutor. On whether we could even pull these properties off the sale auction block. And if that's something that we would like to do with an agreement to to transfer these properties into the city's hands. For the back taxes and all that. And so I wanted to make sure that that discussion was had between all three of us. And since we just authorized this to go to sale, it might be the right time to be had. I guess the right time would have been before it. But Greg, would you, what did you find out?
So, yeah, I talked to David Cannell and his staff earlier before lunch. And he thought that if we did an amended resolution, this was possible. These are the parcels that I believe, I don't remember timing wise. I wanna say maybe the first of January-ish, we brought a resolution regarding the tax title sale. This parcel is on there. And so, yes, Mr. Cannell thought that we could do a revised resolution that would, we could pull this from there. The amount of the parcel that it's up for minimum bid is thirty-one thousand three sixty-seven. Just for the record.
Greg, does that include the penalties as well, or is that just the back taxes?
That's the penalties, interest and back taxes. So that is what, as, not to current, but as when it went on to tax title. Sale in two thousand and eleven.
Greg, procedural kind of, well, I guess it is a procedural, but a question about that. So if that's essentially what the county has into this property, if the property sells for, let's say a hundred thousand. Am I correct that the county only gets this thirty-one and the rest goes?
So this is tax title. So what happens on tax title is it's actually held in trust. So the county is really, it's held in trust by the treasurer's office, to be honest. So we're holding it in trust for the districts that have the taxes owing. Which would be port, hospital, any, anybody who had taxes. So what happens in a tax type? What's that? Yes, including road fund, general fund. Yes, we have, yes, we are part of them, but we're not the only ones. And so, so basically, if the property were to sell for a hundred thousand. The total amount of that is distributed per the levy ratios for that given T C A in the current year. So, so basically, if the property is listed for thirty-six thousand, let's just say, or whatever I just said, I forgot the number already. If that number is bid, and that's the opening bid, and that's all the higher it goes, then we would take that amount. And distribute it across all the taxing districts as of two thousand and twenty-one, not two thousand and eleven. So it's as of the current year, and that's how the tax dollars would be distributed, or how the dollars would be distributed.
Right, so I I guess my question was, I wanted to make sure that extra whatever wasn't going back to the original property owner. It would be more money into all those little tax districts coffers.
A hundred percent. Right, and just to caveat, though, in a normal foreclosure sale, it would go into the real estate trust fund and wait. Because that, that additional, what they call excess proceeds, could go back to the person who's the deeded owner. We're only selling the property to get the taxes back out of it, and then if there's excess funds, those go to the, to the person. But in tax title, where nobody bid on it or anything, and it comes because the laws say that if no bidder within three, you know. Going once, going twice, going three times, the county would take, or the treasurer's office holds it in trust, or the county in essentially holds it. And then we do, the whole proceeds get distributed out per the levy rate.
Do you, can you tell me what the appraised value of this property is?
I can, hold on a second. In the system, the assessed value is a hundred and seventy-two thousand nine eighty. That's just what's in the system.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess the one thing I would like to say about this property is, is it's been up for sale before and it wasn't bought, correct, Greg?
Yeah, in two thousand and eleven, before I was the treasurer, it went through tax title, or through foreclosure, excuse me, sorry. And it wasn't purchased.
So I guess the other thing is, is this is, this piece of property, it's one piece, not two. The second parcel is tied in with the parcel that's the riverfront parcel, so it's actually only one parcel. No matter what happens with this parcel, that parcel is gonna be a pain, because you're never gonna be able to come off of Dock Grade to get onto it. And coming off of the state highway is gonna be even more of a pain, because there's current plans in there to potentially put into roundabout. So there's a lot of issues with that parcel, no matter what, that if somebody does buy it. We're probably gonna have ourselves a problem on our hands in the end, no matter what, when somebody.
Yeah, I would. I would interject just to say, along the lines of what Commissioner Anderson's saying, is in terms of being able to truly allow a reasonable use of land. In keeping with the city's zoning code, these lots are very difficult to do anything with. And I can actually share my screen and bring them up if the visual helps. But I think. It would help to illustrate a bit, I don't think I'm allowed to, but we're really talking about a sliver of land that's south of Dock Grade. And north of the regulator station owned by William.
Greg, one final question. These item, or this, this was up for auction before, and so nobody bid the thirty-one thousand before? Or was it a higher number?
It was this, I believe it to be the same number. I mean, because that's, we're just putting it, we've just said that the new starting bids, the same as what it was before. So in a foreclosure sale, you offer the property at the, the minimum bid is the tax, the taxes plus principal and interest is the minimum bid. So yes, and that was in two thousand and eleven.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
I think it's important for Dan to understand that the Dock Grade. Is dead center through this property as well.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen the map. I've, I've looked at it. Granted, it was a month ago, and it looks very interesting there at the lower part of Dock Grade, so I I'm aware of where it is. I just wanna make sure with my questions to Greg that the taxpayers are gonna get the best bang for their buck in whichever direction we go. And I think he answered my questions there, so.
I appreciate that consideration.
Where we, where the question is, is if this goes through sale and somebody picks it up. And they don't want this trail going through their property, that could. Could devalue our ability to have the connection between the city of White Salmon, as well as the riverfront park when that gets built. It could also stop the, the trail from being created at any given time. And, and so the question is, is where does the board want to go on this, and where do you guys feel comfortable that the best? The best value for the community at large is, is it in trying to get as much money for this parcel as possible? Or is it potentially creating something that, that, you know, matches the stairs from the early nineteen hundreds?
Are you? I'm trying to recall the beginning of this, was, was White Salmon trying to buy it before it goes to sale, or do they want us giving it to them?
No, we're, we're willing to pay the back taxes on it, plus the penalties.
We are at our core. The focus here is trying to capitalize as best we can for our communities on the development of the new bridge. And knowing that pedestrian and bicycle access is being integrated into that project. We feel it's a missed opportunity to not take advantage of that for the North Shore. And the best advantage we can do that supports the economic development, especially of our downtown core. Is finally realizing true pedestrian access from our riverfront up into our downtown. We think that's a huge attraction and selling point that will bring people over here for a day trip, or, you know, make it kind of that sightseeing moment. When people are coming into the gorge. So that's. To answer that original core question, yes, we're coming into this conversation ready and willing to make that purchase, to make sure that that land can be. Hopefully realized into this larger vision that connects all three of these projects, the bridge, the riverfront park, our downtown core. And a truly accessible for everyone bluff trail.
Well, yeah, and the, the funicular plan is definitely a tourist attraction that's gonna even help if we can get that constructed. Up the hillside, you know, that's gonna be the second phase of this, is getting the trail system in and the stairways. But our long-term goal is, well, long-term and short-term goal is to get the funicular in. To help increase tourism in the area between the lower riverfront. You know, we get the park in and new bridge comes in and up above to keep tourists moving through the community. And helping our businesses with, you know, purchasing items and sales tax, so.
So I, I would say with what I've learned here. That I agree that, that I would support your plan as being the best use of this land, so. Yeah, my support.
Yeah, I would say. Mayor, very eloquently put, you, you've convinced me as far as, I wasn't a hard convince, but I would be my. Kind of my place I've been starting on is we have been, you know, die, trying to divest ourselves of these tax parcels. Is the idea to get it back on the tax rolls, private sector, this is not. But that said, I don't, I think this, in this circumstance, this is actually the best use of this property for the overall community. And it will drive business about, I really love the idea of incorporating it into the new bridge placement. As far as in as a way, and I love the, the nod to the history as far as the, the, the old stairs up the, up the hill. I think, I think it's a great idea, so I would be supportive of pulling this, this property from the sale if we can. I mean, we can, sounds like, if we do an amended resolution and, and pulling this one. And then we can have some discussions between the county and the city, how best to. Pull this off. If my seatmates are, I heard from Dan directly, Commissioner Anderson, is that, are you okay with that?
Absolutely, I brought it forward for a reason.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm fine with it as long as they're, they're buying it for the tax value or the back tax value. I would, you know, I'm sure the, the gentleman who was looking at buying the property a year ago. Might getting feelings hurt, and I apologize to him, I wasn't here then. But I, I think this is the best use of the property, so.
All right, what do you need from us, Greg?
I was just gonna say, so it sounds like you guys are good if I draft a resolution and put it on the agenda for the consent. Or however it goes through, that amends what we did with the previous resolution to put this parcel on there. So what I'm hearing is, we'll put something on next week's agenda to get it taken off. And then what we will do, that, that, you know, we are, the sale we're looking for to be on the tenth of March, so we're just right. This is, as far as timing, we haven't advertised or anything, so we will pull that off the website and make sure that we don't. Put it up there so people think it's still part of the process. We will pull that off.
Okay, great.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think we're, I think we're good. We, we'll, we'll continue, schedule some more time with us, and we'll, we'll talk about the waterfront part. Part of that.
Time there, I just, I, I wasn't informed about this, so I like to make informed decisions, so.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. We're putting the, the fun in funicular out there.
You're a great car salesman. If you ever need a job.
All right.
All right, thank you all. All right, we are gonna move on. Our next scheduled. Agenda item is Columbia Land Trust Conservation. To review highlights of past work in the county, update on current project, and discuss potential future work and shared priorities. And I, I see. Yes, hi Sheri, I see you. Oh, Nate's there as well, so.
Lindsay Cornelius is.
She must be on my second page, perhaps.
Lindsay has internet issues as well, so she'll be.
Okay. I see.
I'm, I'm on the phone, Dave.
Oh, okay.
Well.
It's become so popular, we have to have, you know, multiple screens to be able to manage. I mean, our ratings are just through the roof the last.
I know. I was a little taken aback. I'm not surprised. Well, I, I'll start off, I'm Sherri Carney, and I'm Forest Conservation Director at Columbia Land Trust. And I know two of you, but I, I. And I know two of you, but um, I, I, nice to meet you, Commissioner Christopher. And nice to see you, Commissioner Anderson, as a commissioner, and nice to see you, Commissioner Souter. And we're not asking for anything today. Uh, we try to visit, I'll start with that. Uh, we try to visit with you at least every year, um, just to share with you what we're doing, uh, what we're doing as citizens and as a conservation owners in your county. And um, just give a little background about um, what's happened over the last year. Uh, Lindsay Cornelius, who oversees all of our stewardship uh, in Clickitat is with us. And then Nate Ulrich, who oversees our project, our conservation projects um, in the county. And um, I guess I'll just, and, and some of this, you know, uh, but I'll just say that I was reflecting as I joined you. We've been working in with conservation and with uh, the county commissioners for over twenty-three years in Clickitat. I remember visiting um, in nineteen ninety-eight with the county commissioners and really listening to um their perspectives and thoughts about conservation at the time, they weren't positive. And I think uh, I am happy to come every year to share with you what we're doing that we um, really try to absorb what we're hearing from the community, from your leadership. Uh, through that, we pay property taxes, which uh, which is volitional and um, we, which we are proud to be doing. We are very thoughtful about natural resources, agriculture, forestry, economy, as well as the benefits of conservation and access for people. So um, that's kind of our, our guiding light. This year was a big year for us, not in Clickitat, but just outside of Clickitat in Yakima County. We closed on four thousand nine hundred acres along the close boundary of the Yakima Reservation up on the Clickitat Canyon. And that adds to um, so that, that creates eleven thousand acres of conservation. We, we bought that from SDS Lumber Company. We worked closely with Jason Spadaro on that. And I think uh, through that acquisition, um, really shared and kind of shared a lot of uh, values with regard to that landscape, it's marginal forestry, but it's vital to the community. Um, so we have quite a bit of uh, management up there, Lindsay will share with you what she's been doing uh, this last year for fire suppression and health. And um, I guess that's what I wanted to share at a high level. Just, just uh, what we've achieved this year, and then Nate and Lindsay can say a little bit more. And then we're hoping to leave time just for questions and any, anything that's on your mind. And especially from the new commissioners, I, not especially, I always like to hear from Commissioner Souter. But I, it's an opportunity uh, to ask questions, um, if you don't know about us.
Cool. So I'm just going to add briefly onto that, uh, with that purchase that we made last summer, which Jake's a little bit familiar with uh, via the same recovery funding board, which uh, provided a little bit of funding for that last step. That was the final phase of that ten year vision that we've had for the Clickitat Canyon that, you know, uh, at least you, Commissioner Souter, have heard about, heard us talk about over the years. Uh, we feel really good that we set out uh, initially with Hancock's Foresters uh, to help them conserve places that they had allocated as, uh, what did they call them, Sheri? Their special places on the landscape that they thought were also important for long term conservation. So uh, that feels, that's a big celebration for us. In addition to that, uh, this year, we closed on an additional two hundred and sixty acres of agricultural conservation easements in the Trout Lake Valley. The commissioners uh, provided a letter of support for that uh, that funding from the State of Washington Recreation and Conservation Office. And we really appreciate that letter of support, that goes a long way with our state funding agencies. Uh, but that brings together almost eight hundred acres of dairy conservation in Trout Lake. And we're continuing to work with farmers there. They continue to reach out to us as they ask for our support. We are an eligible entity that helps, we're basically, we function as a conduit between these funding programs that the farmers want to access. So we're between the funders and the farmers, and we provide a service, a voluntary service that they've asked for. I could show you a map if you want later, uh, kind of of our priority, priority areas within the county. But I also want Lindsay to have uh, some time to talk about uh, work that she's been, she's been up to. So Lindsay, how about you go next?
Okay, thanks Nate. Can you hear me all right? I just have to check.
Yeah.
It's an allergy issue. Okay, great. So at Summit Creek, what Sheri and Nate alluded to, uh, just on the boundary of the Yakima Reservation, the closed boundary. Um, we're managing for forest health and resilience, so which most recently has involved pre-commercial thinning to reduce the risk of catastrophic wildfire. We're working right now in a ninety-five acre mixed conifer stand and planning is underway to implement um, several more harvests over the next couple of years. Some of those will have commercial elements. Our forestry does look different than industrial forestry. Um, we try to manage for a, a variety of objectives and we're not bound by our uh stakeholders to um, maximize economic im- impact. So we hired Rick Flosin out of Goldendale to do the first phase of work and will look to continue prioritizing local contractors where it's possible. We're also partnering with the Washington Department of Natural Resources and other partners up there to secure landscape scale restoration grants. So we can expand on that work as well. Um, with the intent of building a more resilient landscape to wildfire. Um, the other physical work that we're doing on the hall road or that we've uh, secured funding to do over the next four years is um, for re-control and supplemental planting on that eight miles of restored blood plains that we worked on over the last decade. That's between Dead Canyon Creek and the Little Quikattack Confluence. And the goal there is to promote the recovery of native plants that can provide cover and forage and nutrients for salmon and steelhead and prevent aquatic weeds from altering the way the shallow water habitat is functioning, which is important for juvenile fish. And the juvenile life stage is the limiting life stage for salmon and steelhead on that reach of the Quikattack River. So those two projects are underway right now. And then we're also continuing our baseline, you know, we control fence maintenance, public access management. Uh, we consult our neighbors pretty frequently on their experiences with uh, as, as a neighbor of our conservation areas. Um, and then uh, we also are um, working on the East Cascade Oaks Partnership, which is a, a recent effort emerged over the last three years to help coordinate partners who are interested in oak conservation. And the goal there is to try to um, work with stakeholders in the oak landscape. You know, for current lower elevations where people are concentrated. And there's a lot of uh, different management objectives that people have in the oak landscape, including grazing and forestry and recreation. And, and of course, just living, you know, overall residential use. Um, and so we're trying to develop strategies that can help landowners manage resources in a way that improve outcomes for oaks. And at the same time, try to maximize some of the um, positive impacts for people, for the stakeholders in that landscape. Um, so that's a real quick and dirty summary of some of the projects that I've been working on. And maybe it's a good time to ask for any questions you all might have about anything that Sheri or Nate or I have touched on. And uh, we'd love to hear your feedback on your thoughts about conservation and the role that it's playing in the county.
Yes, Commissioner Christopher.
Uh, yeah, I had a question, um, Nate mentioned uh, priorities map. And so that, that's curious to me, I'd like to hear more about that.
And Lee could share this, so he can share screen. We're in different rooms now, so it's hard to.
We can't bring our big poster in.
When I tried to share screen, it shared mine, which is.
Yeah, it shares her, she's got a.
And if we can't, we can talk through uh, our priority areas.
Yeah.
Lee, you just have to make Nate.
So uh, this is a, this is a map of Columbia Land Trust's service area, what we call our service area. This is, so we started out, uh, Commissioner Christopher in Clark County back in nineteen ninety. We were started by a volunteer, uh, all volunteer group of citizens there who were concerned about loss of agricultural land primarily in the county. Since then, we've expanded, our main office is still in Vancouver, but we have offices in Hood River uh, from where Lindsay and I are based out of. We also have an office over in Astoria. So the shaded areas where we work, basically uh, the Rock Creek watershed out to the mouth of the Columbia. And what this map shows is uh, our, our priority areas. And you'll see here in Clickitat County, there's one area in orange, and that's our highest priority region in the county, and it's focused on two things. One is aquatic habitat. Uh, you may know that the Clickitat River is uh, one of the rivers that has the best opportunity for listed uh, salmon and species recovery. So we're, we're putting a lot of effort into helping that effort along with other partners. In addition, what Lindsay talked about is our oak habitat conservation. And some ninety percent of the oak habitat in the state is within the Clickitat River watershed. So when you're out there, it feels ubiquitous, it feels like it's everywhere, but at a state level, it's pretty special stuff. Um, and that's primarily why that's our highest priority. You see these other areas in green and blue, those are also priority areas for us. Uh, but given our capacity, we're primarily focused on the Clickitat at this point. Um, Trout Lake is focused more for agriculture because we've had so many good partners there uh, in the community continues to reach out and request support. Uh, and we've also prioritized areas along the uh, the Little White Salmon and the Rattlesnake in particular.
And then I, oh, go ahead, Nate.
I was just going to say, we have a, what we call our conservation agenda, this is what this map is from. And it's basically our strategic plan that we revisit every five years. Uh, because of the pandemic, we're a little bit behind on that this year, but we're in the middle of uh, re, I wouldn't say reevaluating, but um, reestablishing these priorities uh, for the next five years. We'll be continuing to be working in this landscape. Go ahead.
Throughout our whole region, we have forestry and forests as a priority. And you know, the, the, the priority there is we live in a forested region, incredibly important region in the world, really. And as you go west, but even west in your county, and you travel west, we grow the best Douglas fir trees, they're native. We have tremendous forests, so uh, a part of our priorities is to keep forestry and forests on this landscape and to not see a diminishment, not to see conversion in forestry. And it really is both of those things, it's, it's the economic aspect of forestry and forests as well as the habitat and recreational and aesthetic and carbon sequestering aspect. So uh, throughout this whole region and in Clickitat County, we really care about the industry of timberland and how that integrates in with our natural resources and, and forests. So we, you know, that's an important one, I think, as we, especially as we focus increasingly on trying to be an, an agent of preventing further climate change, we're really seeing our, our forests as a wonderful natural resource that is renewable and pulls in carbon and stores it.
Hey, thank you, Sheri. Other questions for the, for the team? No?
One thing I'd point out, as I saw Eileen Harvey's name on the list.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I want to point out, Eileen Harvey is on our Board of Directors. Uh, we're really, really glad to have Eileen on our board uh, for two years now. Uh, and uh, yeah.
And Elaine, Elaine lives outside of Goldendale, uh, is Clickitat County citizen and a Yakima Nation member. And yeah, thank you, Nate, for noticing that, and I'm glad you could join us, Elaine.
Okay. Anything else? I'm really looking forward to when uh, you know, this done, we can actually meet in person.
Yeah. You and me both.
All year, I, I have in the past enjoyed your, your updates when you folks come in and talk to us, plus our kind of off, off uh, channel conversations we've been able to have over the years too. And that's, I think, is uh, sorely missed right now. Where we're, we're all just trying to kind of function as best we can. And I'm sure you folks have had the same issue as far as you're, you're a fairly large organization. I'm sure your, your uh, team meetings, your, your business meetings, or you're in a similar situation where we've all gotten really good at Zoom meetings or phone conferences.
Yeah, I appreciate that, uh, yeah. And we look forward also to being in person, and we know that um, for our work and for your work, it's, it just depends on relationships and it depends on being together. And ideally, sometimes being on land together. So, and, and you know, we work quite a bit in Clickitat County and we appreciate you, and we do look forward to um, being together in person. And maybe, you know, when we're through all this, um, a site tour would be especially neat to, to go more deeply into what we're doing.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that would be an excellent idea. You know, although I always like to start with breakfast in White Salmon first.
Seems quite doable.
Yes, I think so, that's always, that's always good. Well, I really have always appreciated your um, um, how much you do, because I know it has been a, it's been a can be difficult relationship over, you know, as you said, you started twenty-three years ago in Clickitat County, which was obviously before my time. But I knew, I, I knew and know the commissioners that you were uh, that you started with. And in some ways, you know, I continued there uh, many of the points of view. And one thing I would say even, you know, and they have said too, is that they really appreciated the relationship building that went on with the organization uh, with the county, and that was really built on trust from building that relationship and really feel like you were hearing the concerns that were being raised by the, the communities and, and the commissioners, you know, uh, that represented those communities and um, you know, and that, that doesn't happen overnight. And I will say, you know, we have lots of, um, we seem to be the focus of conservation efforts in Clickitat County, or maybe that's our perception, but it seems that way. And I, and I can say easily for myself that um, the relationship that the county has had with Columbia Land Trust is not the same as that we have had with other uh, conservation groups that are, are, where it's much more um, you know, consensus building and, you know, really, you know, working as a team. And that is why we generally don't support uh, funding requests to the state uh, for activities. Your, your organization is one of the very few uh, that we have um, that we've done that with. And um, so it, it, even to the point of, we have state agencies that we won't support their funding requests. Or we'd like to not to, we'd like to, we'd like to take them back, but that's uh, that's in the past. But anyway, I just really appreciate that, and that's what I meant about, it'll be nice when we get back together and get out on the land, get out on the landscape, and you can really show us what you're doing out there. And, and out in the communities too, I think that, I'm sure that has been difficult. I know when things were going on on the hall road that were, you know, you folks were, you know, when that all got started, you were having community meetings in, in the community in Clickitat and were able to build those relationships with folks. Which I think did well for you when there, I mean, there, that, that project has not been without glitches from time to time. Uh, and I think that you were able to kind of rely on those relationships to get through some, some difficult. I, I had a few calls from folks when you guys have been working. As I'm sure you all did too.
Yeah, that's, we don't expect to be conflict free, but we do expect to be relationship based, and I appreciate that. I really do, I, uh, and we're going to go forward and continue to um, to be that way and to keep an ear to the ground and to try to hear from people. And, and, and I really mean it, you can't always avoid conflict, but we can listen and be in relationship to the extent possible.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I really appreciate it, and I appreciate, we all appreciate your support and the fact that we really want to do our mission and not um, yeah, not run counter to people.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate it, we appreciate your time. And if you do, if things do arise, we also like it when you reach out to us and ask us directly about it. I am working, I'll just mention because they're your neighbors, very closely with the commissioners in Skamania County on forestry related issues. And I just mentioned it because I know that um, you all are part of, you know, you, you work with the, those commissioners and you work with the Washington Association of County Commissioners. And um, our work extends to trying to ensure that they have um, a forestry base. So that's another, just because it's just so close to you.
Yeah, no, we all talk to each other.
I know you do.
Like, I'm going to text Bob right now.
Well, I've been working especially closely with Commissioner Tom Lennon. In fact, today, I'm uh, we are meeting with all the fourteenth district legislators, your. In fact, today, we are meeting with all the fourteenth district legislators, your legislators, to talk about the encumbered lands that we're trying to pilot. And I know you do know about that, but Tom and I are working on that with all your legislators.
Good. Okay, any, any last comments or questions?
Just thank you.
Yeah, thank you, nice to meet you Commissioner. Nice to see you all.
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Okay. Okay, that brings us, we're running slightly ahead of schedule, but I see, I see Ron there, turned his camera on. We're running about five minutes ahead. Ron, do you have other members of the Fair Board? Is Brandy gonna join?
Yeah, Brandy Myers was gonna join, I'm not sure if she's on or not, she was just gonna call in.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, well, if you guys are ready to move forward, you five minutes early, be okay.
No, that's fine, we could go ahead and start. Just like to take time to thank the board for allowing us to get on the agenda. The main goal here is just kind of bring the board, especially with two new board members up to date, kind of bring you to speed of what the Fair Board is doing. We still have a lot of planning to do, pending where we're gonna be in August. The fair is slated for August nineteenth through the twenty-second. Before that date, kind of send you out the note that we're gonna be posting online this afternoon. One change to make the board aware, the pre-show will be March twenty-first. I believe what I had given you is March twenty-eighth. We had to verify the fair dates. And so it is August nineteenth through the twenty-second. Want to work with the fair, with the commissioners and the health department. One thing we are, really would like to do this year that we didn't do last year is have our pre-shows at the fairgrounds. That'd be March twenty-first, May ninth, June thirteenth. And be able to use the scales to weigh the animals in. And just kind of put that out because we did show the livestock market sale last year that we can come up with procedures and do that safely. So I know that's gonna take working with you and the health department. We try to move those to a Sunday with other activities going on. That wouldn't be an issue interfering with other events. Otherwise, I'm not gonna read the letter, leave it kind of open. I know Brandy had a couple of questions, but leave it open to the board if you have questions of, of me or Brandy. Or Helen, I believe Helen was on also.
All right, thanks Ron. Brandy, did you, some comments you wish to me?
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I want to reinforce that Ron is covering almost all of the questions that the fair work continues to be asked. But I wanted to provide a little background as to kind of what's going on. Between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, there were approximately between four hundred and five hundred exhibitors that participated at the, the fair, and that's not including the rodeo or the county event. Those exhibitors, they brought forth between two and three thousand exhibits. That's a combination of live and still life and this is all at the county facility and and it turned out great. And, and the reason I'm bringing up this is on a regular basis, we're, we're asked as a board and just as community members, what's the status of fair? And we continue to reassure people, you know, we're hoping for the best, that we're preparing for the worst and we're staying in touch with our commissioners and just kind of letting them know what's going on. Not that they don't have an idea of what's going on, but they need to hear that from us. This is that time of year where exhibitors are buying their animals or beginning to train their animals. Or they're looking down the road and figuring out what they're gonna purchase so that they can make their clothes or whatever still life activities they want to do. I can guarantee you, there's a lot of learning going on at home and a lot of people that are excited and again cautiously optimistic. But we just wanted to make sure that you knew where we were and, and seek your support. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Ms. Myers. I guess I'd open up if there's some questions, although you said Helen's on the call as well. Don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, if the board has questions.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'll, I'll lead off as far as first, of course, as always, and I can't imagine that's, that's changed. We absolutely are, you know, support the fair. We, we too, I think, are, you know, cautiously optimistic that we, if maybe it won't be a hundred percent back normal, but we can have some kind of, you know, as near normal as we can with the fair. And I'm sure, and I know the health department stands ready to work with the, with the fair board. So we can kind of design some ways. I'm a little concerned about the, you know, the March twenty-first for that as far as we can certainly, you know, hopefully we can get you folks with, with the health director and kind of come up with some plans as far as how that would work. I mean, we're, unfortunately, as, as we know, we don't, we don't make all the rules. When it comes to this, I don't think we make any of the rules. Unfortunately, you know, and we will, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a county facility. And so of course we'll have to, we'll have to be compliant. But I can't say anything that I, I think we can have some, if we can have some discretion and we can work with the, the health department and the health officer. It seems to me we could figure out a way to be compliant and be able to do that. That's really the only gate that I have any real concerns about. I think the other ones, maybe I'm just being optimistic and naive that we're gonna be, you know, when we start getting into May and June, that I think we'll have a little more flexibility, I hope.
Ron, would you, this is Helen, would you like me to respond to that a little bit?
Sure, if that's okay with Dave.
Absolutely.
Yes, we have every intention, so that everybody knows, the pre-show, people just come and go. So we believe that we will be able to follow all of the parameters or whatever because whatever the head town is, we will make that happen because people don't need to stay there. They just need to bring a trailer load of steers, get them weighed and tagged, and then they load up and leave. So the next group can come, so whatever the numbers are, we will make that happen.
Okay. Okay, cuz that's, you know, in the past, that's kind of an event as far as, you know, folks like the, you know, that's part of the fun, but yeah, that's one of those things we've had, we have to modify to be able to do that. Again, I, I'm sure we can figure something out, I would, I would hope. Okay, well, I would, questions or comments from my seatmates?
This is Commissioner Christopher, I would just say that I certainly hope that by summer, we can have some kind of something with the fair. I think it's absolutely vital to the well-being of our community. So you want a hundred percent have my support.
Thank you.
Yeah, my support as well.
Really appreciate it, the main goal is just kind of let you know what we're doing. You know, we're gonna be doing some planning, what if we're in what phase and what we can do. And the goal is to work with you guys in the health department on what we can have because the goal, we're gonna have something. It's just what is.
Right, absolutely, I just, yeah, I can't, I, I don't, I don't want to contemplate, you know, two years in a row. That would be just, I mean, it was hard enough last year, so.
Yeah, two years in a row might make me a little angry. I really, really missed it last year.
Yeah. Yeah. So. So do you, do you need anything from us?
No. We can, you want us to work with the health department then?
Yeah.
Directly on that first date especially?
Yeah, that, that would be my, my advice would be to talk to the health director. I know, I believe she's actually out of the office most of this week on her other, her other duty. But she will be back towards the end of the week. So I would assume by next week, she would be available. But there, you know, the deputy would be able to have the discussion. But Aaron, Aaron would be the one that would be the best to work with, but she's got lots of great staff in there. And, and we can certainly follow up with it next week with her too. But that, that's what I would suggest doing is contacting them. And part of it is you're gonna get the, the uncertainty over because we don't know from, you know, week to week or week to two weeks as far as what, what phase we're necessarily gonna be in. Although I suspect what phase we'll be in, which would look a lot like where we're at right now. But at least in the foreseeable future, but. So I think that would be my advice too, is maybe we need to come up with a plan that's kind of the worst case scenario as far as like if we are, if we are in, because we're in our most restrictive point right now, that I seems like that we've been in. Let's go ahead and try to design a way we can do this as far as these, especially this first date that works with the way the regulations are now. And if it's loosened up a little bit by March twenty-first, great, then.
We can always just line them up to go across the scale and give the cow its COVID injection because they get COVID injections.
Yeah.
And it'll be just another vaccine up at the fair.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, we're doing vaccine, you know, we've done.
It'll just be cow COVID versus human COVID.
Yeah, there you go, I like, I like it, there's a, there's a solution. But yeah, talk to, talk to Eric and the health department over there and we'll follow up next week. But I do know out there right now.
Well, thank the board for your time and we just wanted, the board wanted to make sure you seen this before we put it on our website, just so you have a heads up what we're doing and where we're headed. So thank the board very much for your time.
Thank you.
Your hard work, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Moving along, we're running a little ahead of schedule.
When are we ever ahead of schedule since I started here?
Feeling like something, so next up is Senior Services Director Sharon Carter with the, excuse me, a department update. I don't, if Sharon, oh, there you are.
Yes.
So whenever you're ready, Sharon.
Okay.
We did get your update. Send over to us.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm in a.
That was me.
So I just wanted to give a bit of a rundown because we have two new commissioners on kind of the different main programs within the senior services department. Because we do do a number of different programs and services. We have a lot of contracts that you'll usually see around the end of the year for the upcoming year. Those packets that sign, so I just gave a little bit of a summary of our prime programs and kind of what the funding sources are primarily for those because we have a mix of state, federal and private grants as well as, you know, fee for service income and some other specific contracts. And so perhaps the easiest thing is just if, if anybody has any questions regarding some of the programs or ones would like for me to provide more information, yes.
I do, this Commissioner Christopher, it is not to a specific program, but looking through your guys' history, you have a whole bunch of grants. Do you have a dedicated grant writer over there on staff? If that answers my question.
That's me.
You're like super messy.
So yeah, no, we don't have a separate specialized grant, right? That's, I do the grants. We do, you know, we do partner, sometimes we have in the past partnered with health department or other, you know, with your agency on aging and disabilities of Southwest Washington as well for various grants and programs that we can carry out. You know, my, my goal is always to try and access as many programs or services that we can to benefit the citizens of Clicktatt County. So when we have items that pop up that we seem to would fit and you know, usually I'll, I'll try to pursue the support for those that have obviously talked with the board about pursuing those programs. But we're, and senior services is kind of a misnomer, I guess, in terms of our department because we're, you know, transportation is a huge portion of the budget as well as the service that we're providing and the staff that we have on hand and the grants that are coming in. And, and part of the reason for it being under senior services is it really started out as just a little senior wheelchair van in like nineteen seventies and has expanded over time to be, you know, a full really complement and provide a lot more support for our seniors because we've been able to leverage getting other grants through the Washington State Department of Transportation or the Federal Transit Administration. So we're, we provide public transit as well. So it's not just seniors we're transporting, we're, but we are able to get more transportation for seniors because we are, we're, we're providing the public transit and accessing those grants as well. So just in terms of things that are different because of COVID right now, you know, we've been operating fully, you know, since the pandemic hit because we're considered, all of our different services and contracts are actually considered essential services. And so we've, we've been providing, we did have in March where we had exposure and had some quarantine specific to staff, but we're still able, we're still able to continue to provide meal services, transportation, number of those items. And we've just shifted some of that work and, and then definitely had to look at operating a bit differently. Our fixed route service, which is a shuttle, we have two shuttles, one shuttle that runs between Golden Dale and the Dells, Monday through Friday, seven to seven. And then one shuttle that runs between Binge and White Salmon and Hood River, Monday through Friday to seven to seven. That has been suspended since COVID based on recommendations from health department and the interpretation of the restrictions related to the governor's directives. The plan would be to resume that service once we move into, you know, a phase two again. So that has been suspended. But our dialer ride transportation services, which is, you know, door to door vehicles, taking people to medical appointments and essential services that has been operating and continues to operate. So we, that's the primary transportation service also for clients in Clicktatt County. They're on Medicaid to get to their medical appointments where the contract, one of the main contracted providers to provide transportation services for medical appointments. And then we've made the adjustment again during COVID. There were, we received some additional CARES Act funds from both Washington State Department of Transportation and the Area Agency on Aging to be able to provide some support to folks during COVID. And that's expanding our meal services and delivery. And that's expanding our meal, um, services and delivery services and allowing us to use, um, some of our drivers early on in that, because many of our volunteers were not available because they were high risk. Um, and then we also, um, have been doing, uh, meal delivery and food bank box pickup and delivery and grocery and prescription pickup and delivery for folks that are quarantined because of, uh, COVID. Uh, and, uh, and then of course seniors, just because, and high risk groups that we serve, uh, because they're trying to be safe and protect. So they're, they're, um, they've been homebound. So we've been very busy with that, had, um, great partnership with WAGAP, um, on being able to access additional food, um, to get out and deliver to people. Just, uh, we have another hundred and fifty produce boxes that, um, we were just able to get that we're delivering out to seniors, uh, in their homes, uh, today and tomorrow as well. So, um, it's up, up and down each week in terms of how many new referrals, uh, for folks that are needing, um, some of those essential needs that are coming in. Um, uh, all of our meals, uh, normally we have, um, our senior congregate meal sites where we, where typically we've, we've sponsored the meal where we had, um, seniors at the Golden Hill Senior Centers on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Pioneer Center and White Salmon on Mondays and Wednesdays in Lisle at the Lion Center on Tuesday. Clickatap monthly up at the community center there, Trout Lake out at the Trout Lake School, and then Bickleton with the Market Street Cafe. Those have all been suspended since April for, um, in-person meals. We likely, the way things are looking, probably won't be opening meal sites this year. Um, the hope was that we might midway, but it's not sounding like, um, a level of protection or immunity is going to be developed enough. Um, at least, you know, maybe if we're lucky fall, um, there's, uh, very specific plans that will have to develop, um, uh, and we're not anywhere near the marks yet to even be able to move forward with that. So we are continuing with basically all of our meal services is delivered, uh, meals on wheels. We do have a few people that will call, they call and do a pickup at the kitchen, um, door. Uh, but most are delivery and we're doing over two thousand meals a month right now. And that's, um, frozen and hot meals combined. And we are, um, volunteer base is increasing gradually up again. Um, you know, we've always had a really core, large group of volunteers supporting all of our programs, especially our nutrition program. But because of COVID, all those volunteers have probably are primarily high risk, uh, folks. So, um, that really curbed our volunteer support, but that's been building up again. And we have some kind of, some of our young, younger volunteers, um, uh, stepping up. And so that's been expanding. So, um, most of our meal deliveries are being, um, provided by our, uh, volunteers. But we do also use, um, some of our Mount Adams, uh, transportation staff in the event that we need that. And we're able to use, that is an acceptable use under our transportation grants during COVID as well. So, um, so we're, uh, meeting that need by providing a combination of those. Um.
Um, Sharon?
Yeah.
Us in meals a month, how does that compare to pre-COVID? As far as how many meals a month were we doing on average combined?
Well, yeah, when you, when we look at just compared to January of twenty twenty, it's, it's, it's about four hundred and fifty more meals a month on average that we're doing. Um, and that was, you know, because at our, at our congregate meal sites, especially Golden Dell and White Salmon, we usually had between seventy and a hundred seniors that would come to the site. And then we always have had home delivered for homebound seniors. Um, so there is, there's a lot more work to doing it all home delivered and expense, because we obviously are going through a lot more product, um, because we've got to have to-go boxes and, and then the frozen meals are ones that we do purchase pre-made that have, because they've, there's a lot of, um, uh, requirements in terms of doing the freezing to freeze ourselves that it, we just don't have the capacity for that. So, um, there is more expense in terms of buying, uh, you know, those frozen versus us making all the meals for the numbers that would come, but we.
We buy those from?
Wherever we can find them right now. It's been so early on, we used to primarily source them through, we had a, um, Golden Cuisine as a particular brand that we were using through, um, F Foods, US Foods, um, but we started having problems with getting quantities, um, from them. And we, we had resumed also getting quantities from CI, which is Correctional Industries of Washington. They have a whole food program. The problem is, is we have to pick those up in Vancouver. They won't actually ship here. Uh, we have to drive and pick those up. Uh, Skamania County has, it uses them as well and has same issue. Um, and we're actually looking at another vendor that will drop ship here, um, because we've had issue with CI, because they had some shutdown because of COVID. And so there's been some production problems there. Um, so sometimes, you know, too, we've ordered cases just even of just like healthy choice frozen meals from the local grocers, because we've needed enough to provide to people out at their homes. So, but primarily it's been, uh, CI Correctional Industries, um. And so, and the, the one that we're looking at now, it's just there's a really, really large quantity that we have to order from. So we may, maybe talking with Skamania Senior Services, because they're having trouble getting meals as well. Um, uh, hot meals even we are during the summer with, when the pandemic had started, we were having some challenges of just even getting enough grocery food. Uh, usually we purchase those again, like from US Foods, but also from cash and carry and the local grocery stores. And there were limits, um, you know, and quantities and shortages. And so at that time, that's when we started working, talking with WAGAP and they were getting an a, an actual influx of a lot of large, um, quantity items that weren't suitable for doing, you know, kind of individual or family food boxes, because they were really large, you know, like twenty pounds of pork. And, and so they, we, um, basically, um, they call us and tell us when they have items and we're able to go and get food items from them and use, and that's saving us, and especially if we're having difficulty sourcing certain items. So we've actually been getting a lot of stuff from WAGAP too, and a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables to use in the, in the, those, the fresh meals that we're doing.
Okay, good. Commissioner Christopher, you had a question?
Well, I did, but I think, uh, either she answered it or I answered it. My, my question was going to be, uh, so I'm assuming the hot meals, you're still producing, say, at the Golden Dell Senior Center and boxing them up and then trucking them out from the senior center.
Right. Yes.
So I was going to have a question that has the previous board or senior services, this came up while I was typing. Um, has anybody looked into actually sourcing those hot meals from our local restaurants? But I'm sure the cost would be huge compared to what they can be made for at the senior center. But I thought I'd still throw the question now.
Yeah. I, you know, um, I briefly spoke with in Lisle, the cafe there before, you know, in terms of potentially an option, um, for hot meals. The problem again is, yeah, the delivery, we're using volunteers primarily to deliver and to be able, you know, for the costs that we're doing, the meals, um, it's, I think it would be a nice way to look at supporting, um, some of those local businesses, especially like if we were talking about some other smaller town areas that maybe have a little restaurant, but, um, it's a bit far out for us from our main kitchens to deliver. Um, and so that could be certainly something, um, I could also talk to Adso about, because, um, you know, the Bick, Bickleton Cafe is one that we actually, um, are, are kind of agreement with them is always been, they were doing seniors coming to their special, you know, meal at the cafe there. And then we were reimbursing the cafe owner for the meal.
And that's kind of what I'm thinking about in the outline areas
Yeah.
that we might have trouble getting volunteers going to, at least we're giving some local support to those businesses as well.
Yeah. So that's definitely something I can look into too, to see if there's uh, another way we could look at, um, and talk with some of the little local restaurants about what might be involved in having, you know, a special, like their certain special, and if we had certain people in that vicinity that we could look at some agreement.
I'm just thinking, even if it's one day a week or something, it's going to help those businesses stay open when this is over, when we need them. So, um, I don't know if my seatmates like the idea of looking into that, but, but I do.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and in regard to the nutrition program, and of the update also is that my, our long-term, you know, nutrition coordinator is retiring, um, and, uh, our longtime cook, um, that has been her backup and that was actually leaving to go to Portland, but has actually cited to stay. So we're, uh, moving forward, promoting her into the nutrition coordinator position. Because she has the experience and the, um, and, and knowledge and the working in this and is, is very dynamic.
Is this your cook at the Golden Dell Center?
Yeah, Jack, um, Dehart, because Gold Dell, but has actually been at both and helped throughout, you know, the county. And, um, so she is, uh, going to go into the nutrition coordinator position. So she'll be training with Cindy. Um, and so we will be looking for her position, but now we need to look on, we were advertising for Golden Dell, but we need to advertise for White Salmon, because. So we do have a, a position that we are still seeking to fill. Um, uh, but it's great that she is not going to leave the area now, because she is a dynamo. So.
Yeah, she's not allowed to leave. Tell her that.
Yeah. So, so before it was looking, I was getting a little bit more, I thought I was going to be doing a lot of cooking coming up here. And, uh, I, I'm fine with cooking, but I got a lot of other things on my plate. So I'm, I'm pretty relieved that, uh, Portland was not her cup of tea. So. Um, so we are looking at, uh, that position, um, in, in terms of openings. Uh. The other item, uh, that's coming up that I'll have in terms of, um, coming over to the board, uh, this next week is an, a new, um, uh, pass commuter pass agreement, um, with, um, McCad, um, and in Situ, uh, basically, um, it's one that we've had the last two years now, and that's, um, where, you know, in Situ buys a, uh, a basically a commuter pass for their employees, uh, for riding our fixed route, um, shuttle. And so they're looking at providing, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, uh, for purchasing the pass that will come directly to senior services, Mount Adams Transportation, which will, uh, support that fixed route service. Uh, the funny thing is, is they are still moving forward, even though the service is suspended right now. And we are also in the midst of waiting, you know, that particular grant ends the end of June. Uh, we do, we have, we had applied for the, for another biennium of funding in the last grant cycle, but we don't hear until about April whether we've, we're getting the funding. But it is a, it was ranked as an A ranked project in the, um, RTC, you know, the regional transportation uh, rankings. And typically all the As do get funded, but you never know, especially with how things are kind of crazy right now. But, um, you anticipate being able to have funding for the next two years for that. But even if we don't get it, um, we're getting twenty-one thousand dollars in transportation, uh, through those gorge commuter passes. So, um, so, uh, that's been reviewed by the PA's office and as approved as to form. So I'll be submitting it for the agenda for Tuesday for, for the board signature. And, um, there'll be some more discussion, uh, regarding the other gorge pass. Um, it's one that I spoke with our previous board, full board about, um, back in October of last year, and that's, um, a gorge pass that's in looking at working with Columbia Area Transit out of Hood River, uh, the link in the Dells, um, Skamania County's, uh, transit and ours where they're selling, um, bulk passes, which is basically a thirty dollar well, and it may be forty, they're, they haven't decided on the amount, um, for folks to, um, be able to ride the fixed route transit services with that pass. And they want that pass to be able that we're, somebody could buy that pass and ride any of the, the gorge area transits with that pass. And the selling point of that for us is that it brings, um, fair revenue. We do not, you know, get much in terms of fair revenue, but they sell a lot of these passes to Portlanders and um, have been able to generate a lot of revenue before, um, which they would be looking at providing us, uh, again, about with about twenty thousand dollars to go towards, uh, our match for, for our grant. So that decreases the amount of support that we're providing from our county in terms of, of cash and benefits our citizens in that somebody in Clickatack County could decide to buy that thirty dollar pass and that you can ride all the way to Portland on that as many times as you want for that thirty dollar pass. And that's, that's, again, I, the amount, there's, there'll be some discussion on that, um, uh, coming uh, a bit later as we get closer to, uh, July, because that would be.
I like that, because I know here locally Golden Dell area anyway, there's a lot of people looking for rides back and forth to Portland. So this could really come in useful for those people. So, uh, yeah, I like the idea.
Yeah. And, and I, you know, we're, um, anxious to restart the fixed route service when we can too, because we, we still get calls every day asking us when that route's going to be running, uh, between Golden Dell and the Dells and obviously also, uh, White Salmon and River. So, um, we're, we're just hoping that the case counts decline and we can start moving into more normal functions. So. Um, the other thing is we are continuing to provide, um, even though our offices are closed physically to public, we are doing a lot of, um, over the phone mail, parking lot meetups with the mask and everything to get, you know, equipment. We have a lot of people that need to borrow, uh, medical equipment that we have that's been donated, like wheelchairs, walkers, chair chairs, those kinds of things. Um, additionally, we're, um, you know, the senior PUD discount, um, we process those for the Clickatap PUD for seniors. And, um, that even, uh, we've been, our staff spent a lot of time, we probably, I think they processed over four hundred of those applications already. Um, uh, and that runs through May. It's basically a December through May discount. Uh, they're also busy with, you know, City of Golden Dell has water discount. We process those applications for seniors as well. Um, the other item that's really pretty up in the air is, um, the. The, where we're getting a lot of calls on and unfortunately don't have a lot of. Direct hands-on help we can provide is taxes, um. Typically, we um, have sponsored ARP Tax Aid uh, clinics. Uh, one we held specifically, we would typically have at the Pioneer Center in White Salmon. And we had ARP Taxi Volunteers that did, we did appointments for them. And by appointment, they would do taxes, um, basically from January up to Tax Day. Um, obviously, that's not happening uh, because of COVID and Golden Dale, we also assisted with the appointments for that. Even though usually they did the actual appointments at the Grange Halls. Unfortunately, Golden Dale does not have enough volunteers, so they aren't doing it at all. Um, because of COVID, it's all being um, basically handled. Remotely and electronically. Um, the problem with that is we have many seniors and folks that have no. No computer, no internet, no ability to use that means, so. Currently, the local libraries are offering that they can scan and email items for people. Um, they can call and make an appointment for that, um. So there is basically a gorge uh, tax aid email that people, it's a secure email that people can send it to. And they can get assistance with the library, but. Um, I don't know, again, we did have um. A request of whether or not at some point, even um, the ARP Tax Aid people could. Uh, provide assistance out of the Pioneer Center again, and you know, right now we indicated we can't because we're, we're closed and they're. And we don't know when that's gonna change, so. You may hear from, from different, you know, seniors and folks that they're really struggling, but we do have a number of resources. We do have some local tax prepare people, it's not free, but they do do, you know. For simple ones, it's not as expensive, but we do have information that we're providing to seniors and trying to help them as much as possible, but. It is really difficult because they're used to being able to use the ARP Tax Aid and uh, last year. They could take advantage of it for a couple of months before everything shut down. Um, but now to not have any of that available and people are really um, struggling. Because they can't do the IRS online files, so, so we are printing, you know, documents for people too. And they, and, and again, connecting them with the library and trying to help them, um, yeah, get it done any way they can, so.
I have an off topic that you haven't talked about yet, um. The senior newsletters, how many people do you have signed up to receive senior newsletters? It's a good number, I would love to see that number twice as big, but I don't know how we get to that level, but. I just, I know there's a lot of seniors in our area that are falling for the frog stuff and you guys cover that pretty good in your senior newsletter. And I wish, I mean, a lot of people that I talk to don't even know you have a senior newsletter.
Yeah, you know, we always offer it to anybody we talk to too, and, and I mean, we simply just get their address and that and we'll mail it to them. It's also available on our website, so again, a lot of people aren't online. Um, but that's why we actually nail out as many as we do, because most people want the actual physical. A paper to read, and so um, uh, yeah, we have about. It's, it's been thirteen hundred, um, and we go through that list pretty regularly, because we have people that, you know, pass away. And we want to make sure that we're sending out to.
I know we're in a, a time of COVID, but hopefully as we move along. And we get into things like community days some year, or the fair some year. Uh, we could have a county booth. Um, that we could have information like that where people can sign up for that newsletter as well, so, just thinking ahead.
Yeah, and usually we do have a booth at the fair, a senior services one. And Mount Adams Transportation, and we've typically done health fairs and that too, but um, again with COVID, it's been a little more. Challenging, but yeah, anybody that wants it, they just need to give us their name and address and we'll add them to the mailing list. And so if you know of anybody and somebody can just call us and get added to that right away. And that is a way that we do get a lot of information out, um, but a lot of it is word of mouth too. And trying to um. And that's one of the things that are, you know, leading into our senior advisory board, we do have. Uh, senior advisory board for Clickitack County and we meet monthly, we're doing that via Google Meet uh, right now and phone. You know, different members, but we, we do have two vacancies. On that advisory board right now, and, and a lot of the discussion too is how are ways that we can reach out to folks in the different communities and. Getting the word out and, and what are some of the, you know, areas of need. Um, obviously a common thing that comes up is housing, 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 housing is, is. It's been issue on a regular basis is affordable housing. For seniors, especially too in the West End, um, we tend to find we've got some. Affordable housing units uh, a bit more in Golden Dale, but when we get to kind of the. Um, uh, West End and mid uh, part, uh, there's not many accessible, affordable. Uh, housing options for folks. And so. Um, and then there's a schedule that usually each of you, one of you attends, or I think Dave, you're on for March for advisory board. Really appreciate being able to talk to uh, Commissioner and get an update on just kind of things that are going on the county and. And there's various items that they have a lot of interest in and will bring up um, at different times too during those meetings.
Yeah, I've always found it to be really um, informative and they are definitely engaged as far as they. Uh, which I love, I mean, I, I love that, it's, it's, you know, I've done a couple now in the era of COVID. You know, over the past, which it's, that's a little more subdued than it usually is in person, but. Not much.
Yeah, yeah, and normally we meet in Dallasport at the Community Center. Um, because that's been a bit more somewhat central for people coming from different areas of the county, but um.
The three commissioners rotate monthly at, going to that board?
Not monthly, but you guys, there's one that attends a quarter. And I think um, Lee had sent the schedule out for the year already and Dave is on for March and then.
It's probably on our calendar, I just haven't.
Yeah, yeah, so, so right now it'll be, yeah, joining in remotely, um, but uh. But yeah, they will definitely make sure you know what their concerns are and uh.
So I've been to the senior center over here a number of times and yes, they will definitely let you know what their concerns are. They're, they're, they're strong advocates for their point of view. They are. I, I miss going over there on Tuesdays.
So, just one of the other areas that is, I've been, you know, working with the area agency on agent and disabilities in Southwest Washington. That's the mouthful, Abswa, which is one of our main kind of uh, funding. Sources and grant providers is challenges with, we, you know, we have a licensed home care agency. Clickitack County Senior Services um, has license with Department of Health and we have a home care agency and have. Um, in-home caregivers um, that work out in clients' homes uh, in Clickitack County and. We've really struggled in, you know, in back in two thousand and eleven, the state made a number of changes. With some of the, the training requirements and training availability. For new um, home care aides um, in the home care setting and. Since that time, it's been a real struggle um, with bringing on new staff, um, and there's a shortage. Uh, of uh, providers and service and, and I mean, and there's a challenge statewide and nationally with having sufficient. Workforce to provide it, but I feel like we've struggled more in our rural county and that, you know, there's. So limited op, so many limited options in terms of we don't have any assisted livings, nursing facilities, and we have. A very few adult family homes within Clickitack County and a lot of folks, especially um, uh, in. That are on Medicaid, uh, and many people end up needing to go on Medicaid, um, because it's so expensive to pay. Uh, for care, um, don't have the option of staying, you know, in their community, um, because we don't have those. And then nor, they may be able to stay if they have the support with home care services. But we really struggle to find, and even people that have a lot of resources, um, we're running across that there's. In terms of the options for licensed agencies that can provide the home care services, again, don't have any availability. They have wait lists, they're not serving anybody. So I've been in talks for, it's been the, the last couple of years even, um, to try and figure out. How we can get some kind of local training program in that for either the home care aid certification or. CNAs, certified nurses aides and both um, Leslie um, with uh, the CEO of. Clickitack Valley Hospital and I had been working with Columbia Gorge Community College to try and see if they could. Partner to get something going in the Golden Dell area even. Where we could even get something in the high school where you have kids that can get some of that training in their senior year. And potentially start a healthcare career. Um, we haven't had with COVID and that, it seems like things have not really made much progress, but that is something that is, you know. Really a very high priority item to work on, I have this year. Is to try and look at some way that we can get more of that workforce developed, because we just. Regularly, it's a challenge when we have people calling and they're trying to get. Uh, providers, yet we also have a lot of people that need work, and I think it can be a very good, either. Long-term career or even a stepping stone to other healthcare careers as well. And so that is something that I'm hoping to be able to, to make some progress on this year. And thoughts, I know I've talked to Representative Moss Brucker about it as well. Um, to see if there's, and she's, you know, mentioned in terms of if there might be some diff, you know, kind of workforce development grants available to. Uh, with COVID and that, that we might be able to access some support, but, but we, we really struggle to. To, to meet the needs, we have a waiting list for people um, to get home care services.
Have, have you had a conversation with Richard Foster over that economic development, I mean, workforce development, that? That's a program.
You know, I, I have not, I can talk.
Yeah, I would, that would be a good thing, and we, we could. Station with it, he's been successful with some other uh, programs um. Uh, for workforce development and this, I mean, there's need, and there may be a way to put a program together where we could do the training. You know, bring the trainers in, train, you know, get, you know, as far as for the CNAs, uh, maybe provide that. I mean, and it could even be for folks that are um, you know, family members that are gonna, they're gonna take care of. Uh, family, a person in their home, that, you know, to be able to qualify, then they've gotta have the training and. And be a, be certified and.
Well, and that was, you know, KBH, you know, Leslie, because they're in need of CNAs, especially in terms of. You know, their plan to try and do the long-term care, now granted, I know in terms of their levy, that's made a change with some of that, but. They have that need for workforce and could be a clinical site. Uh, we just can't seem to get any forward move, more movement with Columbia Gorge Community College, even though they'd indicated. A big interest in it, they tend to keep getting focused on Oregon, and we're like, no, Washington has different, you know, requirements and. Um, and just, I have spoken with a couple of people with, with uh, work first and some. Pilot programs in the state even has a, a program that they piloted at another high school in the West Side. Um, uh, for the HCA and so, you know, I'll, I'll connect with um. Richard, there's a way we can get that, because I, I feel like there's a lot of. Uh, folks just even that don't know really what they want to do and they might be able to do some work in home care and fill that need. And kind of figure out what they're planning and earn a good, a decent income and.
Okay, well, I will also, I gotta step across the street when we get done here anyway, and I, I'll visit with Richard if he's still in the office too.
Okay.
Kind of set you up.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I do also have, um, I'll have a, I have an updated Wash State Department of Transportation vehicle inventory. Form one and transit asset management plan that I have to update, or regulatory updated paperwork. Submitting to the board for your exciting review and uh. Uh, as part of our requirement with our, our WAS dot uh, grants. And um, and then I also will be, I have to do an update to our cost allocation plan. Which uh, will then be, I'll, I'll get on your agenda to review with you um. Uh, for approval and signature, because that is suggested that we do that on a regular basis by the auditors. I don't know if you have any other question, any questions on some of our programs and. Budget and services, just in terms of um, I, I guess. One of the things, you know, the, are, the budget for um, senior services, the. The county's cash support is about twenty-four percent of our overall. Because we're about just under about two, two-point-five million dollar budget. Um, and so about twenty-four percent of that is um, cash support that comes from solid waste revenues. Um, that money basically matches the other grants, so it's in terms of leveraging. Um, additional uh, supports and services for uh, Clickitack County. But what doesn't get reflected in that, that overall, you know, dollar amount is, is that basically the in-kind support that. The county is providing, which isn't reflected. Um, which has been estimated at about three hundred thousand, um, that would be which. Um, uh, looking at probably an update to that in terms of the in-kind, because it was based on. Uh, what the square footage uh, of office space and that that were provided. It, you know, the Pioneer Center and the kitchen and dining room and office space there, and then we have our, our office in. In Golden Dale as well, and so that was estimated about three hundred thousand, but that's not been updated probably for about. Six years or so. So um, uh, the rest is uh, you know, grants and what we call, you know. Or fee-for-service contracts and many of our um, contracts with the area agency are a. Cost reimbursement with a limit, and we do provide that for those. And there's, I had, there's about forty employees in the senior services department. The bulk of those are out in the field, um, in terms of, we have. Uh, uh, our office staff, but the bulk of, you know, about thirty of those employees are, are drivers. And uh, caregivers and nutrition staff, so.
Any questions? No, I got all mine out of the way that she was going there. No, I would, I would just uh, update, I did attend, I did have my um. Ads orientation and attended my first, my first cog.
Cog meeting.
Was, I, I will, uh, Commissioner Cosrun runs a very efficient meeting. Was, I will, Commissioner Cosrun runs a very efficient meeting uh as far as you can, I had been warned about that. I I know him anyway through through WAC and it is you just, you you move things, I mean, there is no um, there's not even a pause for discussion. It's, you just move through. And because it was a, it was a very packed agenda and I thought, wow, they're gonna get all this done and it's we did, because it's, just move through it, move through it, move through it. It's, you better do all your homework before. Because there's not a
Yeah, there's usually good packets that come out.
Oh, yeah, it was, hey, which I had, I had read all my stuff, so I, it was good. Uh but they definitely uh, it's a, it's a lot of, lot of material. So I have done that, so I'm getting up to, up to speed on all things.
Yeah, they had, they've had changes, substantial changes there because um, you know, they have a new executive director. David Kelly retired and although reared in his long time, he's very knowledgeable about the programs and services and I think he was a good choice.
Yeah, seems like, so lots, lots of institutional knowledge there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then.
Okay.
I guess, all right. Well, thank you, Ms. Carter and
Thank you.
Work as far as the, although I had one other comment on the the three hundred thousand dollar match. Um, that doesn't really count because, you know, I have been told multiple times that really the the Pioneer Center belongs to the seniors and they just let us use the rest.
Hang up. You, you do know that, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. You know, I I remember during the, the, I'll call it the band wars when we were uh, you know, the, the poor Sharon was the, had to be I would go bad cop two uh over when they had the music so loud, but health department upstairs, they, you know, they were seeing clients and you couldn't even carry on a conference.
Shakes, yeah.
It would shake, it would literally shake the building. And so it was like, we had a, had a dialist down a little bit, boy, they, that was not
No, yeah, they're missing that, they're missing their dancing a lot.
They are.
No, it is very quiet.
Yes. So, no.
Yeah, you know, Mar- Mary Ann Voight passed away. She was
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, she was very key and to we um, we received a lot of donations for nutrition support from family members of hers after she passed away, I think it was past September, but she was very key and
Oh, yeah.
Pioneer Center.
Oh, yes.
For the senior center portion of that and yeah, yeah. No, they, they they are very vocal about that. They think that's a senior building.
Senior, and they let us have that. Health department upstairs, don't they remember? They, everybody needs to know their place.
Yes, yeah.
It's two hours with the music. Come on, people. So, all right.
Twice a week, right?
Only twice, right. Just send all the employees home, come on.
Yeah, don't worry about court and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah, there was court too. It's like, well, you want to go have a discussion with the judge, that's Although, all right, well, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
I know. Okay, uh we're still running a little ahead. I don't know if Casey, it's probably a little early for her to be on the call. Uh we got another business, so we got consent and we can pay some bills if we want. Um, anybody have any issues with consent?
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with ten items.
I would second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, we can pay bills if we want.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable number three zero three seven nine one through three zero three eight five nine for a total of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and one dollars and twenty-three cents for the date ending February eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I would second that motion.
Hey, I have a motion and a second on the bills. Any discussion, hearing or seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This, okay, we have some pay estimates and a change order, it looks like.
All right, Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve pay estimate number one, final to ASETM Inc. And the total amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents, which does not contain retainage for the Clickatack County Jail Entercom Repairs Project C one nine seven two zero. As well as pay estimate, I can do the other one too, right?
I, I did have a motion and a second, that's pay estimate number one, final. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will move on to our next one.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion for pay estimate number three to Justice Systems Corp. and the amount of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents, which includes sales tax at seven and a half percent, two thousand, twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. And retainage in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents for a total payment amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and thirty-two cents for the Clickatack County Jail Control System Upgrade twenty twenty, C two eight four two zero.
I'll second that one.
You can do the change order. Uh I have a motion, a second on passment number three to Justice System Corp. Um, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Well, I'd make a motion that we accept the change order number sixty-five contract C zero three one two zero for the Clickatack County Services Building in the amount of sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Which reflects the removal of the access controls on the doors as noted on the narrative and drawing distributed uh by TVA in PR zero five and PR one zero. Yep.
I will second the motion. Yeah, the, the second, this is change order number five on the County Services Building. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, I see that. Okay, Case says Casey's in the Zoom now. So, next, the Casey Sheridan, uh Human Resources Manager request for verbal authorization to begin the advertising process to fill a vacant corrections officer's position within the sheriff's office jail division. Are you, are you, are you there, Casey?
I am, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. I am just requesting a verbal authorization to be able to start posting for a corrections officer position within the sheriff's office in the jail. Um, one of our corrections corporals was promoted to the juvenile department as a juvenile probation counselor. And so now there is a vacancy within the jail and so they are requesting to start advertising and go through the process with civil service. And to be able to get some applications and have them test and fill the position. It would be a corrections officer, step one, at nineteen dollars and seventy-one cents per hour. Um, and that, is there any questions?
Questions? Nope, doesn't appear to be.
No, unless the board wants to tell this person that they're not allowed to transfer. Um, which I know them, so I'm willing to make that motion, but they probably wouldn't like me if I did. So, so I'm okay with it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You got three guesses.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next up is the prosecuting attorney, but we are running almost a half an hour ahead. Let me see. Oh, no, I see. L, are you available now?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Um, I just wanted to cover um a couple of things. So the criminal dockets have been proceeding. Um, we still have those trials scheduled for um March seventeenth. Uh we've been holding down to about twenty-one cases at this point. Um, so, so a lot of work to do, but we're extremely proud. We got a resolution on one of our higher priority cases last week. State versus Anthony Hook, um cause number nineteen one zero 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 two one dash two zero. Uh, he did um end up pleading guilty as charged last week uh to child molestation as well as several counts of possession and dealing in depictions of a, of a minor and sexual uh uh con- uh conduct in the first degree. He, um, this is a product of a lot of really hard work by the Golden Hill Police Department, primarily Corporal Leo Lucatero with the support of his administration staff, as well as my chief deputy, uh David Wall. I applaud um the work as well as some contributions with some of the the search warrant issues from my deputy Samuel, Samantha Gobea. Uh, so, very excellent work. Um, the investigation, um, this case has been going on for a couple of years now. Uh, including the investigation, charging, at one point he was charged, um then he ended up in Tennessee facing uh charges there. Uh after he is sentenced here, he'll be transported to Department of Corrections and then most likely transported back to Tennessee. But it's that great investigation um that was condone by uh the Golden Hill Police Department, supported uh in conjunction with our office. So there was really close cooperation and covered a lot of additional materials that uh led to a lot of those charges in the state of Tennessee. Uh even though um the, it could be argued that some of the charges he's facing there are less serious, he's looking at significantly more time under the Tennessee sentencing uh grids than he's looking at here. He's looking at since about eleven years um 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 on the mid-range point for the sentence here and then um uh supervision, then transfer to uh the state of Tennessee. So I just want to applaud um uh my staff and then the Golden Hill Police Department on that excellent work that was, that was done there. Um, these are extremely difficult cases, as you can imagine. For the families involved, for the uh the 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 actual victims, the families of the victims. And then for the law enforcement and then the prosecutors, these are not easy cases to process and digest and the materials to go through the discovered process of of the um interviews. So we're, uh, I'm, as he liked, I'm extremely pleased at the work uh that was done um on law enforcement on my office on that. So we're, we're quite proud at the result we achieved there, um the convictions as charged. So um, we have not received any word if the trial dates in March will be continued. It's my hope that we'll be able to coordinate some way of getting at least um some trial work going. Um, so we can, again, everything's been in flux as you gentlemen are are well aware. So we still have, as of yet, cannot, have not been able to return to full um charging policies that um we had for years. Um, but you know, like just about every other county, we're all trying to, we're still, you know, struggling to get a handle on this. Um, so um, there is a, a topic that um either at the end of the agenda today or perhaps as as set time next week, I want to discuss a couple of matters of pending litigation, but it would require an executive. So I'm not going to ask for that now because of the you know, the complexities of of trying to get people in and off the, the line and so forth. So I'll be happy to, in open session, entertain um any questions or or comments. I'll be happy to uh try to address those.
No, I, I would like to thank your staff and the Goldendale Police for their investigation and their, the way they handled the search warrants. Um, I heard about it. I'm ecstatic. It's a good job you guys did on that. So, thank you.
I appreciate that the, the, the digital evidence collection has been a real priority the last few years. Um, and we have a younger deputy Samantha Gobea, um she's kind of the primary lead on the district court on the misdemeanor level, but she's very bright. Um, she's, um, she hopes someday to be in the FBI. I'm hoping to keep her for a few, few more, few more years. Uh, but we've, I've actually sent her training in Alabama a couple of times, put on by the FBI in coordination with the digital uh team housed out of the King County Prosecutor's Office. Um, you know, the resources they have are uh quite something. Um, and so there's been a lot of resources, a lot of training. A digital evidence collection, I mean, that is, I'm just about every case nowadays has an aspect. I mean, think of the wealth of materials, information on, on anyone's phone. Um, so, you know, getting that training up and trying to you know, embrace some of the techniques of the twenty-first century and the information technology for evidence collection, even on your run-of-the-mill domestic violence case or or trafficking charge can provide essential information for some, for some of these um, obviously charges involving uh child pornography and depictions and and, um, you know, it's absolutely essential to have a firm handle on the digital evidence and the uh, the, the very high standard set for getting those warrants. There's usually steps of warrants. Um, you, you warrant to get the phone, warrant to get in the phone, warrants that the process, um, it's a, as uh, you know, as you can expect, the, the Supreme Court, you know, starting dealing with this about seven, eight years ago. You know, we recognized the extremely sensitive nature of uh our, of our phones nowadays. They are you know, the, the combination of our wallets, our portfolios, I mean, everything about us are in these phones. So uh, you got, you have to show quite a bit um in order to really um get in those things, but uh they are a uh just think of everything that's on your phone. If you got something to hide, uh we, usually we can get at it. Um, so it's, it's a very good resource. And that training, you know, pays off in cases like this. And again, Corporal Lucatero was very receptive, very eager uh to follow through. There was never an issue with uh follow-through at all. So I know he had the full support of his administration, so we, we really do appreciate that.
Excuse me. Any other questions or comments for the prosecutor?
I'm, I'm in favor of going into executive session here in a little bit, since we're ahead of schedule, so I'd like to get it done since, you know, we are ahead, but I'd like to get everything else.
Quick questions in board pending. Um, take two minutes and then I'm ready to go to executive.
Yeah, would that be all right? Prosecutor Canal?
I, I defer to your schedules, gentlemen.
Yeah, no, we're actually, we're running ahead, so it would be good, so we can do that. Um, if you can, um I guess what we'll do then is let's go ahead and move into board pending. You said you got a couple of issues and then we can um come back with the prosecutor and go into executive session.
Uh, first question, has the county looked into hiring a county grant writer to help with various departments? If, if we have, where are we at with that? What was the findings of the passport in doing that?
I would say we have talked about it before. The issue was going to be, was the, the um paying for it and that we do have, you know, we do have lots of grant writers in the different departments that have been really successful. It's kind of, we have lots of grant writers now. They're just sort of a distributed throughout the departments. So in the past, I think the idea was, well, unless we um, you know, we have, you know, other than it's the, the workload on those folks in those departments, but quite often you know, they're writing grants in their department that are kind of specific to, that are available. Like, I'm thinking of the road department or uh, things like that, health department, stuff like that, so.
Well, I understand it would be, you know, essentially hiring another staff, but if you can get enough state grants to counteract those wages. Um, I don't know, I mean, that was my curiosity. If we've talked to those other departments, if, if other departments think we're missing opportunities or not, was just an idea I thought I threw out there.
The issue that, that, and it comes down to it, you, you can't just be a grant writer and write a grant all the different ones. So, so you could have somebody that facilitates it, but I don't think there's the true value in that.
Okay, next question. Uh, earlier today, we were talking about Bad Wells. Uh, it was brought up northwest of Golden Dale and Jake took the lead on these, so I was hoping you could give me a little better description on what entails that area northwest of Golden Dale that had some water issues, let's say.
So, we don't know for a fact there's water issues northwest of Golden Dale. Um, there's been people that have discussed um issues potentially out uh by Thompson Road, going out one forty-two, way out there at the end. Um, I have one well that I know of that's been declining out there for quite some time. Um, it could be, you know, uh pumping, um but it's more likely the fact that they went and Um, it could be, you know, uh, pumping, um, but it's more likely the fact that they went and put uh, an entire set of trees. Out in an old field, and so those trees are sucking up the water in that little area. Um, as you go further west from there, um, it's one of the areas that I hope to, that we'll have Whitney focusing on this next year. Um, the other area, um, uh, that somebody recently mentioned was near Spring Creek. Uh, west of Goldendale, but from all of my uh, uh, years of measuring out there. It's a, it's a fractured system that is determined on snow and snowmelt for a lot of it. You know, because it comes down off the mountain, and so it has a pretty high fluctuation just regularly between spring and fall. Um, so I, we need to look into it more, but it's still something that would be a multi-year process before we could say that truthfully. It's not like, it, the, the High Prairie thing is, is I have year over year of declines among multiple wells that just keep declining. And the reason there could be, uh, most likely it's a well that was deepened and it wasn't cased properly. And so you're dumping all that water from one aquifer into a lower one, another simple reason is the Dillacourt Canyon, a rock could have moved down in that canyon. And that could have released all that water just into the Dillacourt, so there is, we tried to track it down, um, spent a lot of time and effort doing it. Weren't able to, and then again, though, there's the, the water mining on the east end of the county, but that's a whole nother ball of wax.
Perfect, thank you, Sirs.
Mine for pending, um, I was, we didn't talk about it last week, but it is uh, our applications for our committees. And getting that on the website and going, um, what was holding us up before was Ivy was out, but. With Ivy being back, I think we need to get that moving, and I don't, I, did, did we pass the, the uh, resolution already?
No, Sirs, the, the application, or excuse me, the resolution has not been passed. If you guys are ready to move forward, it can go on next week's agenda, everything has been posted on the county website in a draft form. So what is there for you to view?
Though, I believe the resolution is on the prosecutor's desk to look over, if I'm right. And I don't know if he would want to look at the application as well, just to make sure we're not uh, doing anything wrong, but yes, it's. When, when he signs off, I think we've all signed off and we're ready to officially sign off.
Yeah, I think we need to get, as we're, we've got several vacancies on these boards and we've agreed to kind of what our process is gonna be. And we need to, um, we need to get going, because as we had heard earlier, we've got some timeframe, you know, the time is. Um, getting tight on some of these, that we need to get these positions filled, so we need to. We need to be.
It would be nice if we can get it all signed off on next week.
Yeah. Yep, okay, anything else? I don't really have anything I can, I can live, I can live without at this point, so. Uh, okay, so, we will go back uh, to time with prosecuting attorney, if. Uh, Mister Canal, if you are available now, I'll announce the executive session. Okay, alright, we will go into executive session in accordance with RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero. Brenwin for an I for uh, pending litigation, how long would you anticipate?
Uh, I think ten minutes, if we can start there.
Okay. And just for folks on the phone or Zoom, no decisions can be made in executive session, anything would have to be done in session. We don't have anything else on our agenda uh, after this, but you're welcome to come back in, in ten minutes and check in with us. I will start the clock once our screens are clear. I would, I would ask folks to leave the meeting, I'm getting bigger.
Four more, they're, they're getting deleted one of the time.
And does Lee need to stop the record button on this too?
Yes.
Yes.
Good call.
Yep.